The city council work session meeting to order at 5:30 PM. I would like to call on Susan Muir, Parks and Recreation Director, to present our topic for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. You may notice I sound a little froggy tonight. I passed a test that nobody wants to pass.
Just one second, Susan.
Oh.
We can't hear you, so we're going to work on this end.
Okay.
Okay, try now.
Testing, testing. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm sorry I can't be in the room with you tonight. I tested positive for flu A, and since we're talking about all things community health tonight, I will be beaming in virtually. Before I share my screen and get rolling, I just want to provide a little bit of context for tonight's discussion. You all had a great goal-setting session a few weeks ago, and we really wanted to build something that really captured some of that energy that you had. And while you haven't approved or acted on what came out of your goal-setting, and we know that's still a draft until you improve it, but there's still work to be done on the Culture, Parks and Recreation project. So we'll be able to take the top thoughts, ideas, and feedback you give us tonight into designing the next steps of this project. So we're hoping tonight can be a real kind of roll-up-your-sleeves sort of conversation. Some of you have been involved in this project for a long time, and some of you are newer to it, and all perspectives are needed for these next steps. There's no issue too small, no question too big, there's no sacred cows. This is the opportunity for each of you to get your voices into this project. As you know, I almost always start these conversations by diving into the project history, the facts, the dates, but not today. Today, staff is here to listen to you. So we're going to take notes. We might ask a few clarifying questions or repeat things back to you to make sure we understood them, and overall, listen as you all work through the discussion topics. We don't really intend to respond or dig into the discussions with you. Like I said, we are really here to listen. So with the statements, questions, or prompts, whatever you'd like to call them, that we've come up with, they were in the staff report, I just also want to say, there may be more issues that you all want to put on the table, and we want to hear about those, too. So if we don't cover something just by the, you know, hitting not exactly on the topic you want to talk about, please, please weigh in and throw that out there for us. To facilitate the discussion, Mayor, if it works for you, Jenny and I have a PowerPoint with a slide for each of the discussion topics, and Jenny's going to read the question, and then it would be great if you or Jenny could do this as well, but go through the dais, calling on each counselor individually and yourself, of course, for discussion with the goal of hearing from everyone. Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay, great. I will start the PowerPoint. Oops. I just sent a request, Daniel. Okay, got it. All right, so here we are. You all are familiar with the project and the name and the logos and all of that stuff. And really, because Parks and Recreation is involved in this, I can't help but put up something that is Parks and Rec-related. So this is us. This is all of us that are working on this project. This is the council, this is the community, this is us, your staff. We're getting ready to figure out what the next plays are and really see how we can do to make the community a better place. And tonight, as I mentioned, this is staff. We are going to catch any curveball you throw to us. We want to see any fastball. You give it to us, and we are going to capture it, and then we're going to figure out a response and come back to you with either more information, facilitate a conversation, or we may even need to go develop some data for it. But our goal is to not let any issues get by tonight and help you through the process. So what we have built into the work session tonight is, as I mentioned, the facilitated discussion regarding the items that we had in the staff report. And then I'm going to introduce the consultant team, and then I'll introduce the community support team. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jenny to start the discussion points.
Okay, so we have our first question, and I would like to start. Scott, any ham?
All right. It's an interesting forum to jump straight into. The obvious thing to me is that our Aquatic Center and also Community Center are basically at their livable amount of time that they have. So I, again, I'm struggling here a little bit, just in the sense of I'm not exactly sure what we're...
You're on the right track. We're wanting you all to discuss whether or not, what you think of the conditions at the Aquatic Center, Community Center, Library, Senior Center, and Parks are. Just kind of your impressions of those, what your thoughts are, and just, you know, and I apologize, you're one of the newer counselors, to jump right into this, but that's sort of the basic of the questions. And Jenny can read the questions if that would help you all kind of get grounded in the overall discussion point.
I skipped Jenny, because you were over there, and I looked for you and didn't see you. So, sorry.
Well, and I was having trouble turning on my microphone, so I wasn't able to say, "Wait a minute. I need to do my librarian job of reading."
Please.
Aloud, to all of you. And so just to get, because it took me a little bit, when Susan and I were talking, it took me a little bit to wrap my head around this process as well. The idea here is maybe some of these are made as statements. We're not necessarily, I mean, you can say agreed, disagreed, if you want, but really it's more about to start a process of discussion on each of these points that you can give us your thoughts and feedback about. We're not necessarily needing you to vote on agree or disagree. I hope that gives a little bit of clarification. So, discussion point number one for each of you to discuss. The conditions of the Aquatic Center, Community Center, Library, Senior Center, and in our parks require city investment and intervention beyond current maintenance standards. Discuss.
Okay.
All right.
So, Scott, are you comfortable starting?
With that being said, yeah, I'm happy to discuss, and certainly, a discussion always involves other people. So with that being said, I think undoubtedly the conditions at the Aquatic Center and at all do require city investment. I mean, but the obvious question is, are we throwing good money after bad or neglected in this particular instance? And it worries me to see the quality or the standard of these buildings where you have tarps on the roofs and we have a constant amount of maintenance that is required that goes above and beyond just general maintenance. So I would agree with this statement.
Counselor Chenoweth?
You'd think I would have learned by now not to hit the power button until I moved the mic. So for me, I think the phrase "current maintenance standards" is an important discussion. In terms of, one of the questions I asked probably two years ago was, what would the cost be to actually completely fix the two structures that we currently have that are in need of repair, which predominantly is the pool and the Community Center? So I would agree, we're probably past maintenance standards, but I have wondered many times whether or not it might be more prudent to bring our two existing structures to a level of functionality that would fit the community's needs, as opposed to starting from scratch. And that answer, I challenge to answer because I haven't seen numbers to tell me the answer to that question. So that would be my take on what I feel or think when I see that statement.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the Aquatic Center, I was a regular patron at for probably six months every day about a year ago, and what I found is that the size of the pool for recreation is not sufficient for the size of the classes that they have. There's a senior arthritis class that meets, and they take up every square inch of the smaller of the two pools. In the winter, when it rains, there's multiple locations where they have to put trash bins out to catch the rain. There's rust stains all through the building because of the leaky metal roof. So I don't think that the Aquatic Center would be sufficient for the needs of a town of our size, and particularly with the plans of how we're intending to grow. I don't spend as much time at the Community Center, but I question the wisdom of having two separate facilities and also the safety for folks at the Community Center. To my knowledge, it's never been something that I've seen to be a problem, but I just don't love that our Community Center is right next door to the jail. The Library, I can't really, I mean, I think that that could use improvement as part of a broader investment. Senior Center, I haven't been there for a few years. I have been there several times back when I would help with meals, and I honestly am not familiar enough with the needs and the situation there in terms of maintenance. Overall, I would say that, in particular, the Aquatic Center, I see is well beyond the, it's well beyond the intervention for current maintenance standards, I think. So that's what I know.
I'm just going to do my part and then go further down the dais. So Aquatic Center, I do feel that we need improvements at our Aquatic Center and probably a new one. My concern is the burden on the taxpayers for us as a city alone to maintain that and to build that, that I would hope that we would have conversations with, maybe you have, that I'm not aware of, with Linfield, because I know their pool is also in a similar situation, that we could share that, have a partnership that would lessen some of the burden on our taxpayers. Community Center, yes, we have an old armory that's been here for a long time, not necessarily in the best setup for our community. Library, I hope you're going to go on a tour here soon to really know more about that particular building. The Senior Center, I was in recently. I guess I can't 100% say whether I understand the addition of 3,000 square feet over there. An upgrade, yes, but again, I would need to be shown that a little bit more before I could support that. And so my concern is that, is that we look at our partnerships before we just stick all of the cost on our citizens. We've had lots of people testify in support of it, which I, great, but I've also had lots of people come to me separately that have that concern of the tax burden. So, yes, I do think that we need some improvements, but I do have some questions in regards to that. Counselor Gary?
Thank you. And as you all recall, I was part of the community group that we, as a council, appointed, MACPAC, to create, through a citizen appointment process, create this recommendation that's kind of, we've been bringing along, so I have a little bit of an unfair competitive advantage. But, so I would say, overall, I agree. The conditions of the Aquatic Center, Community Center, Library, Senior Center, and in our parks require city investment and intervention beyond current maintenance standards. I would agree. I would highlight Parks, Aquatic Center, Community Center, you know, what's been said, totally agree. Library is in need of sort of a refurbish, enhancement, modernization, a lot of things that we can do a lot better with, a little bit more space. Senior Center, I would agree with what's in the recommendation. And then the Parks specifically, you know, as a father of an eight-year-old, I've been heavy user and a runner in town, and it's outdoor a lot. Parks, I think, is, want to make sure we don't lose sight of. I see a lot of, just in the time I've been out there playing with my son in Parks, a lot of, I've watched the degradation of maintenance in parks and things and play equipment and watch that in real time. I also see a ton of half-used parks. We have this big, big space, and it's nice to have open space for uncurated items, but a lot of half-used parks that were, are decidedly only half-developed because of budget constraints. And so I think being able to go through those and continue to develop, continue to make good on the plan and implementation of a collective walking, biking, running trail through town that the BPA has helpfully put us down the path on. So I would totally agree. And then I'm sure it's in Susan's notes, but Counselor Chenoweth, we have a few documents, facilities condition assessment, and a few other master plan facilities recommendations that were there when we formed this recommendation to start MACPAC. And just quickly, while you're thinking about it, from 2019 costs, renovating the Community Center was a $35 million project, and renovating the Aquatic Center was a $22 million project. Again, 2019 costs, and things cost a lot more now than in 2019. But roughly, I can send this to you, and there's a little bit more data in there, or I'm sure Susan will have that, but just while you were thinking about it.
If you could send it, that would be great. I was not on council in 2019, and I did not see that.
I want to clarify. Can Mayor? Yeah, thank you. Counselor, can you send that to Claudia and ask her to just dispense it to the...
Sure. Again, I'm sure Susan's going to include the refresher, but yeah, happy to while it's here, so.
Are you done, Counselor?
I'm done with this one, yes.
Okay. Counselor Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Susan and Jenny's commitment to bringing us information and keeping it current and sort of this project top of mind. I don't think I've been vocal enough about this, but I get concerned about people using phrases like "at the end of its serviceable life" or whatever, because like, the roof on the Aquatic Center can be replaced, and the roof on the Community Center can be replaced. So I guess, thank you, Counselor Gary, for bringing to light the total rehabilitative cost. I guess I think a little bit more, maybe simple-minded, but also more budget-friendly on what it would cost to improve those buildings to sort of a minimum standard, so that we're being responsible stewards of city funds and assets, so making sure that both the Community Center and the Aquatic Center are maintained properly as real estate. And then, let me catch up on my notes. Oh, and the other thing is, I get concerned, because as with many construction projects, I think we were, if the bond is successful and passes, I think we were told like three and a half to four years, as with many construction projects. You know, we can budget for five, but what do those structures, what does the Community Center and the Library particularly look like while we wait the five years and making sure that we're still able to meet the needs of the community, the recreational needs of the community, while we're waiting for the construction of the new facility? Thank you.
Counselor Tocolski?
Yeah, so the question, again, it asks my impression and the information I need or the discussion I would like to have on this. So obviously, the Aquatic Center does not meet the needs of the community today, and if you go in there with children, you'll understand that real quickly. It's not large enough, it leaks. My question is, why did we let it get to that point in the first place? And so I do have some questions about that. If your house is leaking, why don't you fix it? You don't just put buckets in the living room. So I have questions about how we're maintaining our current arcs, our current buildings, and adding to them. Are we just going to continue to forego the maintenance that's required, and will they fall into disarray? It concerns me. However, the pool itself is inadequate for the size of the community we have. We don't have enough lanes, we don't have large enough, safe enough areas in the pool for children to just go and be by themselves, and parents to know that they're going to be safe. So I do think that we need a new pool. The cost is very, very concerning on all of this. I haven't seen any kind of phase brought forward. I've seen a lump sum ask being brought forward so that everyone can say, "This is our dream." But when you're building a house, you don't always get the house that you dream of, you get the house that you can afford because you do have to live within a budget. On the Community Center, we're continuing to recycle an old armory. It meets some needs, it doesn't meet other needs, and it doesn't meet any need real well. The problem is that we have this toxic nostalgia within the city of McMinnville. The Aquatic Center, the Library, the Community Center, what happens when those buildings are no longer in use as that Community Center? Are we going to continue to hang on to those and continue to need to maintain those, which we can't afford to do today or have decided not to do today? I'm concerned about that. The Library itself, it's not a great library. It's, I'm thankful, you've done a great job with what you have, but we can do better. It's very disappointing to see that the Library is in the condition that it is today. It's not safe for children to go in there by themselves. I don't send my children there, I wouldn't, even though they're in their teens. It shouldn't be used as a warming center. There's a lot of things that are wrong with the Library, but there's a lot of things that are right, because there's a lot of good people within the Library that are doing with what they can. And building a new Library or adding on to the Library, I think, is a great idea. I just don't know how and I don't know where, but there is a proposal for that. The Senior Center itself, I've been in the Senior Center for dance lessons before. I don't see it being adequately used, ever. So I would like to understand where I'm not seeing that use. Every time I'm there, there's maybe four or five cars in the parking lot, there's one or two staff in there, and there's a few folks that are using the facility. I've never seen it properly used, so I don't understand that one. So that's one of the asks that I really need clarified, is what is it with the Senior Center that we need to do and want to do and should do? Holistically, I just wanted to say that the Parks themselves haven't been greatly maintained due to staff, due to funding. The bathrooms are often out of order, the bathrooms are often closed or locked. I was at Pearson Park, J. Pearson Park, on Sunday this weekend, and there are a number of pieces of playground equipment missing. They've just not been replaced, so I'm questioning, why are they missing? Why have they not been replaced? And that's concerning to me. We're not maintaining what we have. Goes back to the roof on the Aquatic Center, so I need to know how we're going to pay for it. $158 million is a heck of a lot to ask from our citizens, and it concerns me because, well, nothing's inexpensive right now. However, we also need to make sure that we're also good stewards of the future, because we're using today what people gave us yesterday, and we need to make sure that we provide for those tomorrow. So we've got to find the way that works for McMinnville within our budget, and I would like to see a phased approach. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks for the feedback. We'll move on to discussion point number two. Moving forward with one new building to replace the Aquatic and Community Centers makes sense.
So before we answer that, or actually address that, I want to make sure that the council knows, if there's something that you miss saying or ever want to add that may not be directly towards that statement, you have every right to say that, and I would like you to. So if there is something that was missed, please add that. It's okay to go off of that topic. So I'm going to start with Counselor Chenoweth. Oh, with his mouth full. Sorry.
I think we're, I have a hard time with this particular statement, because I think it depends a lot on what the dollar values are. I think, as you've heard already mentioned by two different members, three members of the dais, that the dollar values that we're talking about is an awful lot of money to be asking out of our constituents, and what does that actually mean to them? So I guess I could maybe say it this way, if it was right-sized, I worry if we're, if 152 million is what I thought it was, but if we're 158 million, that package is a huge amount of money. Added to that, the amount of increase that was discussed that would be needed in our budget to maintain this ask is concerning to me. And so I do like Counselor Tocolski's reference of a phased approach, and I'm not sure how that would work in regards to this particular statement. So, you know, when we get to the money side of this, and some of the thoughts that I have there that might tease out some of my concerns, I'm going to be sounding awful pessimistic and negative till we get there. But I just, I have had grave concerns about the level of burden that's been put on our constituents over the last several years, and what this is going to add to that burden, particularly on those on fixed incomes. You know, as Sal has said multiple times in our conversation, on the dais, we are in a war that has a lot of very challenged folks financially. And while a lot of us could shoulder this burden, there's an awful lot of us that can't. So I'm concerned about how that's all going to play out. So that's a long-winded way to say, I'm not sure I have a direct answer to this particular statement. I think that's good.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with some of what Counselor Chenoweth just said in terms of ability of community members to pay. I was at a meeting last week where YCAP was talking about the statistics from the food bank, and they serve 20,000 individuals per month. So there's 100,000 residents of Yamhill County, so that's one in five people. So I'm definitely mindful of the ability of residents to pay for the things that we ask them to pay for. That being said, I'm going to set that set of concerns aside and focus instead on just the core question that's being asked here, which is whether one building to replace the Aquatic and Community Centers makes sense. And I would say, yes, it makes sense to have a single facility for aquatic and fitness-related activities. I've never seen a Community Center that didn't have both or that had those two services separated the way that ours had, at least in a small town, until I came to McMinnville. So I think the setup that we have is subpar. The only other consideration I'd have, and I've raised this throughout the process, is that I do think that we gain something by having some of the facilities that we do in the downtown core, whether it's the Library or the Aquatic Center. I think that does lend to the centering of our community in the downtown, which is where I believe it belongs.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Yeah, thank you for saying that, Sal, because now you've kind of made me think this question a little differently. And yes, I would agree, if we're going to do this, it makes sense to have it in one building. So from that perspective...
Okay. So to answer the question, I do, I'm not 100% sure. I think that there are options, so having it in one building for maintenance in regards to staff, I think, makes sense for us as a city. But if we do come to an agreement with another partnership, that I would look at that as for cost-effectiveness, too. So if we were able to have a partnership with Linfield, and it may need to be on their property, I think that's something that we need to look at, too. So to 100% answer that, I can't say yes. And strollers was another one to look at in regards to recreational water use. So I'd like to make sure that that happens, if it hasn't already. I also want to go back to Parks. I didn't really mention that in the first part, and I have a concern about our Parks as well. We have some Parks that are great and used, but we have, some of our most valuable Parks are in such disarray and not maintained that it's hard for me to add a whole lot of other Parks to what we do if we can't maintain what we have. The safety in the survey, and the survey, I'm going to tell you, I'm not thrilled with the survey that went out, and I would not approve that in the future. It was aided and leading, and I don't think it gave us necessarily exactly what we wanted, a true reflection. So, and I took all those surveys, including the phone call surveys. So what I would say is, there were a lot of comments in the surveys, even with it being aided, that said, "Safety." Not necessarily, "We want more Parks," but "We want to be able to go into our Parks and be safe, we want them clean, we want bathrooms." And to me, that's the least that we should offer to our citizens, is that we can go to the city park and feel safe. We can go to... We can go to the Library connected to the city park and feel safe. I walk through it at least once a week, and I know exactly what our citizens are saying. So that's concerning to me. I'd like to know what's hindering us from taking care of those. I also would like to talk about the affordability. I know that you have in there money in order for maintenance for a rec center and the Aquatic Center, but I'm not sure if that is just for that building. And if that's the case, where's the maintenance going to come from for the other buildings? And some of those, you had an increased square footage, some changes to the Library, but no additional maintenance cost. Well, if you add square footage, there's definitely going to be additional costs, whether it be heating, cleaning, there are going to be additional costs, and I want to make sure that we're clear on that. And my other big concern is, to me, I don't know exactly what our citizens are getting based on what's been presented. So we have people from the pickleball that would like to have pickleball courts. We have a swim team that wants to have a pool, which I want all that stuff, too. But I'm afraid that when we get to time for construction, someone's going to be left out. Something's not going to be on there, and I don't want to be the one to tell the swim team they don't get their 50-meter lap. And so I want to make sure that whatever we're putting on the table is realistic for what we can offer our citizens and realistic for what we can pay. And we talk about affordable housing, but my concern is affordable for the people that are already living in their homes to stay in their homes. So I want to offer services, but I also want to make sure that we're prudent of the people that are on an income, and we have a lot of low-income people in our community. Thank you. Counselor Gary.
I agree. I support moving forward with one new building to replace the Aquatic and Community Center, and it makes more sense. And it's sort of getting to the question later, but it makes most sense. It allows the facility to be constructed and the existing facilities that they're replacing to be in operation during that process. So hopefully, you know, no day without a pool. And it also frees up those areas or amenities as resources. Again, that is a question later, so I think this makes the most sense.
Counselor Payne.
Thank you. I don't have a significant amount to add. I agree that it probably would be helpful to have both of those services and facilities combined. My concern also is similar to what Spence said, that there's probably potential for pricing out current users, especially those that are on fixed incomes or low income. And I think going, there was a November, something rather, November 12 work session where there was reference to fee rentals being significantly increased, and I worry about that because I know several people who've already been sort of priced out of that potential for things like baby showers. I would also agree with Mayor about potential for other partnerships. To that end, I would love to see some data on users, which I know it's relatively impossible to capture the users of parks, but specifically paid users and how many of them are coming from other cities where maybe there's partnerships for partnering with those smaller communities that we serve, like Dayton, Lafayette, Amity, et cetera. And then I have said it before and I'll say it again, that the location has not, while I do honor that much of our community is downtown, I also feel like the Miller property is kind of so far outside of many people's reach, whether, like, transportation is a barrier for a lot of folks. And Susan, maybe you can drill a little bit more detailed into this, but if I remember correctly, the undocumented population, which I'm not trying to go down a rabbit hole there, but the undocumented population doesn't feel comfortable navigating Third Street and downtown, which is very touristy oriented. And I know that there was the committee that put together location preferences, but again, going back to the cost, I wonder if, like, Mortman Park might be a better option because then we're saving potentially millions of dollars of taxpayer funds to place the facility on property we already own. Thank you.
Counselor Chakoty.
Yeah, I'll try to keep this quick. Creating one building, yeah, it makes sense. I'll just leave it at that. It's going to be more economical that way. I just want to go on record, though, and state that I don't support any kind of a partnership with Linfield. The reason is because I don't believe that Linfield would have our best interest in mind for the community. I believe they would take the pool and use it as necessary for their facilities, and certainly if it's on their land and it's partially their building, it's going to come down to a fight, in my mind. And I don't want to see a partnership with Linfield. So. I'll have.
Excuse me. I forgot all about you.
Yeah, over here, over here. Sorry. And I forgot about you. You know, I'll try to keep it brief as well. I think, you know, obviously, I think when you consolidate your resources underneath one roof, it can obviously add to some better economics when you're dealing with maintenance in one building as opposed to two separate buildings on two sides of the city. So I could totally see the sense of putting those together. I share the concerns of Counselor Payne in the sense that Miller, as much as it is adjacent to one of our more-used parks in Joe Dancer, it does feel a little out of sight, out of mind. But with that being said, I understand that there is limited space and limited abilities for this type of facility. And the only other comment that I would make is to my fellow counselor to the left here, is I think anytime we're talking about someone with eight zeros, it's a concern of all of us at this point. I mean, it's a huge ask. It is a huge undertaking, and everybody's concern should be addressed for sure before moving forward.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Counselor Tokolski's comments. I wouldn't want to dissuade any potential partnership myself, including one with Linfield. But I do think we would need to go into it very carefully and with our eyes open. I do think it needs to be on our own property. And I think, you know, depending on how that laid out in terms of what we are agreeing to as part of that, you know, that's what contracts are for. So I just wouldn't want to be so quick to necessarily knock them out of the park, just me. I understand your concerns. I get it. But I think one of the ways we get to a potential yes where all of us are willing to get behind this is to find players that will help buy this price down. And so that's going to take some give, and we'll just have to be careful in how we put that give together.
Mayor, may I respond?
Counselor Tokolski.
Yeah, so let me, if I may clarify that for just a moment. The KECC property down by Albertson's is what I was referring to, and that's specifically, if folks don't have the background, that was a proposed area that was Linfield land with a partially Linfield-owned building. And so that part of that is very concerning to me. What you brought up, Counselor Chenoweth, is not what I was speaking of. That kind of a partnership would be acceptable. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other comments before we move on?
So just on Dan, you know, Linfield was at the table when we were going through the recommendation. They brought up the property, and as always, an odd dilemma is we have to look and talk about other people's property. Hey, that'd be a cool place to build this, you know, in your house analogy. I'd like to buy that property that you own now and put my house there, but we have to do it out in public. And so had those conversations with willing partner of Linfield, too, that sounds like a potential we could talk about. That was as far as those discussions got. The details on who maintains the ownership of the property, can it be split up? Who builds it? Who buys it? Who owns it, maintains it? Were established as questions, never answered, never got any farther than that, and it sort of, the MOU expired mutually and it never got reestablished. So I just want to, they were at the table as a partner, and no other details came to light. So, but I just wanted to state that out there.
Director Berg.
Discussion Point Number Three. The financial operating plan for the new rec center discussed with Council on November 12th, 2024 demonstrates the confidence needed at this point in the project. Understanding the actual fee setting will be done by City Council at a later date.
Going to start with Counselor Peralta.
Counselor Peralta's not sure he understands the question very well.
Well, good, because me either. Susan, can you kind of tell us exactly what you're asking?
Sure. Yeah, we did the analysis to determine what it would cost to operate the facility as proposed by MACPAC in today's dollars, and presented that to City Council with some examples of potential fees, potential costs. We did build into it maintenance dollars and capital replacement dollars. But I think the fact that this question might even be a stumbling point means we need to bring back some information about that. But generally, are we on the right track with how we're trying to figure out how to fund this and provide you the information that you need to adjust the dials to figure out the right answer that you want to move forward with? And maybe the best way is to say, what do you need? What information do you need that we can provide to you? What analysis would you like us to see or bring forward, I mean?
Thank you.
Well, I understand the question. I'm not sure how comfortable I am with it. No, I think it's a good question. It's a fair question to ask the body. I would say that my perception throughout this process has been kind of sticker shock. I mean, it's not that I didn't realize this was going to be expensive, but I think the entire time I've been watching it, I feel like I haven't moved from that very far. For me, it would be useful to see how this might come together in phases or where if it wasn't, you know, if we were describing it as, you know, this is our full ask of, like, you know, I could be prepared to make a big ask to the city, and then if the city says no, then come back with a pared-down ask. You know, something that helps me to understand the different levels of what we might be buying. And I think that the intent of that is to try and get to a right-sized approach for the community. Like, before this went to MACPAC, you know, I was really enthusiastic about the idea of, you know, keeping more in the upper-city park and trying to figure out parking. And there were good reasons, I'm sure, that that didn't become part of the conversation in MACPAC. But it would be helpful for me to see options or at least see a path by which the options might be laid out. Because I definitely have seen, like, when the school bonds happened years ago, they had, you know, kind of a big enchilada with the new high school, and it was a really big ask, and the voters turned that down, and then they came back with a pared-down proposal, you know, within a year later. I'm just saying that that type of thing would be good. It's good to have a backup plan. Thanks.
I agree with Counselor Peralta that I would like to see a little bit more of a phased option as well, just to kind of look at the dollar figures. When it came to your fee schedule for using the rec center and the pool, one question I have is multiple of our users are McMinnville addresses, but they're rural. They're not paying the property taxes that the people that live within the city limits are paying. How do we decipher that to make it fair for those that are paying the property tax plus the same fee to use the services? That's not equitable. So that would be a concern to me, that I would like to know how we're going to adjust that. I don't know if, you can't have the lady at the front desk look and determine if you live in the county or not. I'm not quite sure how you're going to do it, but I think it's a fair question to ask. You know, if this bond passes, do we start paying on the bond immediately? And are, no, not until we start construction. I guess I'm just trying to, how much is it going to cost us to run facilities and pay any on the bond? I don't know. That would be a question that I would like an answer to. I'd also like to, a little bit more from the city as to what we're going to do with the buildings that we have, and are we going to use that to pay down the bond? And can, if we do phases, can we sell a facility and then go to do another project at that point? And then my other questions. Concerning about the parks, if I'm reading this correctly, it's like a million dollars a park to develop. It's a lot of money. And about $5,000 per acre to maintain. And again, I may not have that right, but that's what it looks like to me, which is very costly. And then if we talk about SDC fees for the park, those are extremely high, and the cost for someone to buy a piece of property in McMinnville, pay all the SDC charges before they even put a shovel in the ground, is really, it's a lot of money in order to actually build in McMinnville right now. So that is also a concern for me. And the SDCs for the parks can only be used to develop new parks, not maintain what we have. And again, maintenance of our parks, if we put any more, develop any more, I don't know how we can do that because I don't know how we're going to maintain them. I'm very, I have a big concern over not maintaining our parks right now, our Wortman Park and our city park. I think they're a real jewel. I think the city park could be great for the people that work downtown, the people that go to the pool, but you're scared to go to that park right now. I think that we also, when we're talking about this, if we're using the correct population, our population has not grown like it was projected on the data. We're barely growing. So I want to make sure that what we're doing and we're projecting for is realistic in what is actually happening. Let me just make sure I don't have any other. I think that's all I have for now. Counselor Gary.
Yeah, on this one, operating costs, you know, I think, yeah, so we're writing operating cost models on user fees and costs for things. A lot of projecting and assumptions on the facility that's in the recommendation for MACPAC, which is a big, awesome, dream big, gnarly, you know, future building. And if that's what we end up with, that, we're going to take a bunch of guesses at what it's going to take to operate. And so we have to have a starting point to have some understanding of what that means. I think those are important so that we know, okay, where are our areas? What are those potentially going to be? And where are areas that we, as council, who set the budget to operate the facility, can look at and talk about? How and where is it important for us to subsidize? Do we want all 13, all people in our community, 13 and under, to be in free? What does that cost us? Do we want to phase in our current long-term partners into a five-year role in for the new operating fee structure? What does that cost us? And how do we take that on, make sure we can keep the pool running, keep chlorine in the water, keep the air clean, and operate this facility with those people in it? So I think it's a great starting point. There's a lot that we need to work through, and these are great starting points. But I think working our way through where are the areas and how can we be creative in operating and funding, and where does Council find it important to subsidize or not, and how do we recoup costs? I think the way that we have the, you know, tallest pole in the tent when it comes to the county's recreation offerings at the moment is a real question and concern, and we can see what we can do to get the county at the table when it comes to operating costs. I think those are great partnerships to explore. So I think that's my main thought on three was kind of about, I just interpreted it mostly about operating costs, and so those are my thoughts and feedbacks on that.
Thank you. Counselor Payne.
Oh, just kidding. Thank you.[1797.65]
Thank you. I share the sentiments of mostly what's already been said. I think it is difficult to conceptualize operating costs at this point, especially since we're looking, we're looking a few years in the past, but then we're also trying to look into the future. I, I can say with some certainty that based on what I've heard from folks, particularly in my ward, is that they are being, they're reluctant to use the facilities now, but that makes them concerned about like a new facility. You know, we go from sort of like below average to brand new and folks are concerned about being priced out. And again, I mentioned several people I know have already been priced out of using the Community Center for Services. I think, so there's a reference to demonstrating the confidence needed at this point in the project and I, I don't intend, I don't mean to take that too literally, but I do have concerns from the community as, in terms of their confidence in, in us collectively as electeds, as department heads to make decisions about the right location, the right cost that suits the needs of the majority of the community. I realize we're not going to meet everybody's desires, but I will get more into that with the next question. Thank you.
Councilor Tocolski?
Yeah, it's hard to understand if a fee structure based off of a proposal is going to meet the needs of the city to maintain and operate. So I'm not going to add any further to that portion of it, but what Councilor Peralta brought up was in 2004, the high school did have the bond that was, I think the original bond was a large one and I think that was a pretty nice plan. And then they came back with a second bond, which was a, a plan that I would say cobbled together what is currently the high school today. And it's, while it works and it works well and the teachers do a great job and admin, it's, it's a challenge for the students because they're carrying their books with them everywhere. Lockers are no longer used by many. The reason I bring that up with respect to this proposal is the phased approach, if it is a phased approach, I would like to see that we do carry forward with the original intent rather than just cobbling together what we can afford today and go for the long game, the marathon, rather than the sprint just to get something quickly. So I would like to see a fee schedule that supports that so that we can actually achieve the dream rather than just achieve something that is adequate for today. So, thank you.
Councilor Cunningham?
Yeah, in regards to number three, I basically do have confidence that y'all have worked to create a budget for operating that is feasible today. I have concerns, what, three years down the road, four years down the road, and I know that you adjusted some of that up for pay scales going up as well. And hearing from my fellow counselors that people are being priced out, then my next comment might be moot in the sense that I thought that there was quite a bit more room for space rental and that type of thing to add on to the revenues of the facility. So to me, I felt like that was a part that was kind of lacking, that there were spots within the operating that more revenue could be raised to hopefully offset the general user fees for the, for the public. So I'd like to see maybe outside the box ideas for that.
Councilor Chenoweth?
I'm not sure I've ever said this before, but I have nothing to add.
Director Berg?
Counselor, come in. Time check in. This is great. All of, all of the discussion is exactly what we wanted to hear. You're about an hour into your work session and you're four questions in. That's great. Don't feel rushed. We can always stop when you need to stop on this work session and carry what you don't talk about into the next one. So this is really helpful, really great feedback. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. And that's what I was going to point out as well, while thanking Councilor Chenoweth for not having anything to add so that, you know, we move on to discussion point number four. The Miller property is the best location available to us for the new REC Center?
All right. So I guess I get to start on this one. You know, I don't think there's a lot of, there hasn't been a lot of options based on what I have heard. I'm not so sure it's the best place, but I'm not sure where else to put it, honestly. My concern is we have a lot of proposed building that's going to happen in the Southwest area plan, which is a lot of, a lot of homes. And, you know, this particular location is on the edge of town north. So to try to get children there, riding their bikes, I'm not so sure it's the best option for that. I don't know how many kids ride bikes anymore like we used to.
Hey, I got my bike back.
You're an exception. So I don't know that I have a better location. I'm just, you know, my concern is just the distance. Is that a real central location for all the citizens? Where Wortman Park was brought up, I thought that was a great place. I hate to lose a park, but I like the entrance on both sides and next to the senior center and parking and the school. So, but that's my basically unclear answer. Councilor Geary?
Yeah, I mean, in the same line, again, part of all the, all of that property discussion that happened through MACPAC, I think it gives us the best chance to put the best facility out there for the citizens and to meet as most, as, as much need as possible. The, the things that I, that you don't think about when you think about this cool building is all of the other room that it chews up, the, all of the parking, all of the bus traffic management and infrastructure, all of the outdoor amenities that it needs to be able to accommodate in the future potentially. It's, 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 you know, so, so much more than that. I think it, it does good and when it activates that area where we already have a, a big outdoor area and it has a, has an area that has been under, under, underutilized and puts it to work. I, I too really balked at, at putting it at Wortman when it was discussed in the, in the MACPAC facility. It would just break my heart to take all those trees down. It doesn't still fit. It still has a lot of access, bus management, people management challenges, and we lose, we lose all of what Wortman offers us. So yeah, they're having not a wealth of, of options. I think the Miller property gives us the best of option to put this out there to the community on a, on a respectable timeline.
Councilor Payne?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the map is being viewed. So I guess I become concerned about the Miller location for several reasons. The first of which is the lowest household income areas are in the north central and southwestern areas, while also the southwestern area is mostly occupied by not, well, mostly occupied by children. So the, the, the youth and adolescent population is actually more significant in other areas of town. So I just want to make sure that we're being mindful of the location with respect to household incomes and where the demographic is coming from that would utilize the facilities. I, and I guess part, part of those locations probably has some proximity, proximity relationship to schools. I am usually the first to protect trees. I'm a, a big proponent of oxygen. I love it. I, I do appreciate and value the loca, the in and out access of Wortman Park. I guess my only hesitation with Wortman Park with respect to the fact that it was vetted out by the MACPAC is if there is potential for the county to relocate their justice programs to the fairgrounds, then that would sort of be another thing that we would just be re-experiencing with what we have with the Community Center right now and the, the proximity to the jail. So I guess that's more of a question based on small town rumblings. I personally would not use it if it was at the Miller property, so.
Councilor Tocolski?
Just go on record and say I don't support using Wortman Park as the location. Give it 200 years in McMenville, that'll be our central park. And if we get rid of it today, then it's gone forever. So I don't want to see that thing go away. I would also say that the Miller property, while it's not ideal with its location, is something that was heavily vetted by the MACPAC individuals. And I did want to go on record and say that I do thank them because I know they put a lot of tireless effort and work into that decision. And while they've probably all personally struggled with the decision because it's not easy and it's not the best location for everyone, it's a location that works for McMenville at this time. It's not the best location. It's a location. So I'll go with it.
Councilor Cunningham?
I pretty much agree with much of what was just said by the last two counselors. That I don't, I, Wortman Park is one of our more heavily used parks as it is today. And I'm trying to think of adding the amount of traffic that would have to go in and out of that would, would be difficult. So with that being said, I also agree that the Miller property is not necessarily a, a perfect property. And in fact, having a significant amount of its space be potentially unusable or, or uniquely usable with the slope of the hill to its lower area. At the same time, I think, as I said before, I'm, I'm not sure there is a perfect property out there that would suit all the needs for both the building and the outdoor courts and that type of thing. I also, you know, if, if we could, I'm actually just going to stop. I don't need to add that, so.
Councilor Chenoweth?
So I think it would be inequitable to the frisbee golfers to put an end to Wortman Park's frisbee golf course. I'm not even a frisbee golfer. Disc golf, thank you. See, that proves that I'm not a disc golfer. I, I used the wrong term. But I do know it's the only, I think the only one in town that we have is, is in Wortman Park. So yeah, I, I don't think Wortman Park is the right solution. I also, I probably have not ever said this and probably should have said a long time ago, so thank you, Councilor Tocolski, for helping me to remember my manners and to thank MACPAC for the effort that they put into, to vet all this and to get us to this point. I don't want to take that lightly. That being said, I will not forget the first time that Sal, Councilor Peralta, made his comments regarding wanting to see it stay downtown. And, you know, I, having grown up here, having rode my bike when you kids did all over town, down to the outdoor part, uh, pool that was downtown. I, and it was downtown. It was central for everybody. I value that central for everybody feel. And so I, I don't think the Miller property is the best location. I don't feel like that if we're going to rebuild is where I think it would be best to be rebuilt. On the other hand, I'm not sure how I envision it happening downtown. So reality may hit a brick wall against my idealism and what I would prefer to see. I wish there was a way to keep it downtown, I guess would be my best answer to this question.
Councilor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it occurred to me as I was listening to some of the fellow counselors making their comments that, you know, we on this dais are kind of making judgments that MACPAC did over a period of, of, you know, months, if not years. And as, and it's kind of interesting watching people kind of come around to the logic of, of where MACPAC landed in terms of the location because, you know, yes, if I'm speaking from the point of view of nostalgia and the idea of what I think McMenville should be in terms of being a centered city, then yes, I prefer downtown. But if I'm thinking in terms of what Councilor Geary was saying and Councilor Tocolski about the future of the city and the long-term needs of the city, attaching the facility to our largest outdoor park and all the parking that opens up and the elimination of challenges to transportation, I realize it's a farther trip, but thinking through the logistics of what it would be like to try and park in Wortman with the high school traffic and everything right there, it, you can immediately see the benefit of the Miller property from that standpoint. So I kind of agree with Councilor Tocolski with the idea that this is a location in a town that has very few, that is suitable to our long-term needs.
So at 6:36, I think we can get through one more question and then leave the rest for the next time. So Director Berg, if you can read that one?
Discussion point number five. A new general obligation bond in the near future is well timed among the city's other current debt, debt obligations.
We're going to start with Councilor Geary?
I think I would need to know more about what our current other long-term debt obligations are and a map of what those are and how that would be. And then, and then overlay that with how this roughly would phase in, you know, the, we've talked about if, when the bond passes, the, what projects we chew off first and how we do that and, and when those monies hit and how that rolls onto taxes and what's coming off. I know there's already things, Schmeckada, you know, is, was unsuccessful and what the implications are if they go again, if they don't go again, if that's unsuccessful, what that is the overall, regardless of our debt obligations, but the, the current taxpayers would be asking for their debt obligations overall. So I think for the next work session, a broad picture of what that looks like would be helpful.
Councilor Payne?
Thank you. I guess, I mean, now's as good a time as any, just, I mean, if we don't do it now, we've already seen significant inflation from 2019? Is that right? 2019? So, and I, I guess there'll probably be more of that. So I think now is as good a time as any. My hesitation doesn't really have anything to do with finances as much as it is just distress from the community on how we're already maintaining facilities and parks and how that distressed can evolve, good or bad.
Councilor Tocolski?
Yeah, the question asks if the general obligation bond is well timed. Are we talking about May or are we talking about November? Are we talking about 2026, 27? Anybody know the answer to that question? What does well timed mean?
Susan?
Well, right now, we are saying no sooner than November of '25.
My concern is, let's just say we ask for everything. $158 million bond is a significant ask for our taxpayers. Couple that with the $1.50 that's supposed to be added back in with multiple fees that don't have a, an end date and they're evergreen and inflation and the unknowns with interest rates and things. I don't think it's a good time in May to ask for that bond. It's, the economy is a challenge right now for a lot of people. I mean, a lot of people. It, it's hard to say that November would be the right time, but there does come a time when you have to ask. And so we can't be afraid to ask, but we also need to be considerate with what we ask our taxpayers to bear. And that's why I think the phased approach is best, which I haven't seen yet. But I don't think it's a good time for, in a general obligation bond, to ask taxpayers for more money when we haven't currently, I would say, made our house whole with fees more money when we haven't currently, I would say, made our house whole with fees and the $1.50 that is intended to go back to the taxpayers again. Thank you.
Councilor Cunningham?
I'm not sure it is ever well timed to have to go to the well for $152 million or whatever it is. With that being said, I think we are also coming hopefully out of the challenges that we've experienced in regards to inflation and the rising costs. Although, you know, the one that I, you know, have mentioned a couple of times now is the world continues to change in the sense that all construction items are heading to Southern California at this point in time. So the cost of everything is continuing to go up. However, I agree with Councilor Tocolsky that, that at some point, we need to move forward. We are at a point where with these buildings, whether it's the $25 million renovation, $35 million renovation, or the building of something new, we need to move forward. A few of us were just at the Capitol today and were told about their construction project there that originally was $200 million in renovation and is now at $1.2 billion in cost and 10 years behind schedule. So the question is, are we going to spend with hopes $25 million to keep the pool open and 10 years from now, we're still working on the building and it's $100 million?
Councilor Chenoweth?
So since this is going to be the final shot here, I want to get something in that has nothing to do with this question before I answer this question. One of the concerns, I really want to see what a phased-in approach would look like. I really, we really echo that. I want to see that. That being said, one of my takeaways from the poll, and I'm eyeballing the pollster, I think that's out in the room right now. One of my takeaways from the poll was that the, what got us into the best numbers was the inclusion of the senior center. And that without the inclusion of the senior center in the package, it really struggled to get the kind of voting that we needed to get passage, which leads me to the conclusion that if we phase in, obviously, you can only have that in your request once. And then it's no longer there. So I worry a little bit about a phased-in approach in that it could end up leaving us in a situation where we don't have the ability to complete the process because we can't get the vote for the next batch in the phase in, if I'm making sense here. So I just want to throw that out there so that as we're considering this, this is in the minds of folks, because that was one of my takeaways. And I even asked at that, when you brought the poll to us, if I was reading this correctly and was told that that was a correct understanding of the data that was being presented to us. In terms of whether this new general obligation bond in the near future is well timed among the city's other current debt obligations, I'm really going to go far afield and say, I would love to have seen the innovation campus already started and moving before we did this. I would have loved to see the urban renewal district retired and done before we started to do this. And the reason for both of those is that the tax basically increases and takes the load off of the regular homeowner and puts the load into more of the urban and industrialized areas of our community, which would have made this a lot more tenable to my constituents. So in that regard, I would say, no, it's not well timed. Realistically, I understand, we're what, 10 years away on the URA and probably similar on the innovation campus. So I would lean to what two people have already said, I think both ends of the dais, which is there's no such thing as a good time. And while I would prefer it 10 years from now, you know, when those two things have happened, you know, we got to see where we're at. Among the city's other's current debt obligations, this may be as good a time as any.
Councilor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything really to add to what's been said, other than somebody mentioned the tax rate, the $1.50. And I am still not at all adverse to, you know, first of all, I don't think it's a guarantee that the city gets all of that. And second, if we were thinking about what to do with it, I still think that a parks district is something that we should consider with those funds.
So my opinion is, I want a rec center and an aquatic center like everybody else, but I do want more information before I tell you exactly when I feel like it's the best time to go forward. I think we do need to take a longer look at what are some things that possibly we could cut out that would not, that we as a community wouldn't feel that, a real hard feel of taking something out, but it would reduce the cost. I feel like we need to do that. I also do want to know whether the debts that we're talking about, to know exactly is it, what are the city debts? So some more information would be helpful. And then my concern is too, that Chamekada, you know, their bond went down and it was not going to be any additional cost to the community. It was at the same rate. So that's a little concerning. Also, I would honestly like to know what's the cost to the city to put it to the, on a bond, or on the ballot, just out of curiosity. What's that going to cost us so that we make sure that when we put something out there that we have a pretty, we're pretty confident it's going to pass for the cost? So that's just some information I would like. Anybody else want to add anything before we close the work session?
Councilor Chenoweth?
I meant to ask, I would also love to know, just for giggles, how much money to date we have put into this process? And I know in the packet, it was said $113,000, but that was the last two years and this process has been going on longer than that. So I would love a counting of the total amount of money that's gone into this process to date. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I can take just one more quick minute, I wanted to introduce our consultant team to you. Jake Wegler is in the audience there, as I think he was identified as the pollster. He hasn't had a chance to meet all of you and he's welcome to come up to the microphone and introduce himself. And then I also wanted to introduce Kevin Chambers to you all. He is a part of the community support group and wanted to give you a little bit of information about what they're doing now. So Kevin and Jake, if you are in the room, feel free to come on up to the table and introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Susan. Mayor Morris, members of the council, my name is Jake Wegler. I am the partner, one of the two partners at Praxis Political. We're an Oregon-based firm. I grew up here in Oregon. Went out and saw the world a little bit and moved back in 2006 and have been working in Oregon politics ever since and in consulting since 2011.
Close, my wife does stand-up, so she's going to give me a lot of crap about this later. Literally put it on your mouth. So for those at home who missed that, my name is Jake Wegler. I am a consultant with Praxis Political, grew up here in Oregon. We're an Oregon-based political firm. Do a wide range of work, whether it is working in elections, working with public entities like the city. Recently worked with Tillman County. They just referred an emergency services, emergency radio bond that was approved in November, like a lot of other revenue measures in November. It was a rough election season for asking for money. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to work with you all. We worked with the city on the fire district restructuring and then the dollar sense conversation around $1.50 and soliciting community input on where that funding should go. And I'm very excited to be working on this process as well. So thank you.
And hello, thank you, Mayor Morris and the council. My name is Kevin Chambers. I've been in front of you before talking about this project a little bit, but I am representing our group of citizens who mostly came from the MACPAC. And we've been meeting ever since that committee was dissolved. And we have been thinking and talking about this project for the last, you know, five, six years. So again, I heard a lot of you saying you need more information. We have people here in the audience. I'm willing to meet with any of you individually if you want to ask questions. We've been thinking and talking a lot about this for a long time. But we also wanted to let you know that we have an organization and a group of people. Mayor Morris, you mentioned you want to make sure this passes if we put it on the ballot. It doesn't get passed without an organization like ours supporting and advocating for this type of facility. It's up to you what it looks like. Whatever gets put on the ballot, we're going to try to support to the best of our ability. You mentioned the Chamekada bond, something that we've been talking to consultants about and among ourselves, is we didn't really see a very strong advocacy group for that bond. We think that's one of the main reasons that failed. You can also look at other bonds that have been successful in communities in Newburgh and other places where they had a very strong group of people supporting the bond and that's what we're trying to do. So we're setting up that, we've set up that organization. We have a group of people that have all have committees for each part that we think would need to get passed. And at this point, Councilor Chenoweth, you mentioned the polling. One of the things we took out of the polling was there, we felt like there was a lot of lack of information out there. So I think our goal right now for the spring and the summer is to try to talk to people about our facilities and let your constituents know what we think is going on with the facilities and what we think the best options are. And then if and when we have a bond on the ballot, we have the organization, we have the money, we have the infrastructure set up to support that bond and help it get passed. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your time and all your efforts towards this. Susan, thank you for all the work that you put into this and for being so receptive with our questions and willingness to go back and research those and bring it back to us. And I'm going to make some appointments so I can meet with you and some of the other, Mr. Chambers. So anything else on the dais before I close the work session? Okay, it is now 6:52 and the work session is closed. Thank you. We'll be back for the regular meeting at 7:00.
Recording in progress.
I will now call the city council meeting to order and request Daniel to do a roll call.
Counselor Cunningham. Counselor Chikolsky.
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Still here.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Council President Peralta.
Here.
And Mayor Morris.
Here. I'm going to ask Director Richards to lead us in the pledge tonight because she took us to the Capitol today and was in charge of this, and you did a great job. Thank you.
We have a proclamation tonight. The designation of February 2025 is Black History Month, whereas the City of McMinville is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion as a fundamental aspect of our community, and whereas the official theme of Black History Month 2025 is Black Resistance, which looks at how African Americans have fought repression from America's earliest days, from escaping the plantation to the rise out of poverty and the struggle for equal housing and education, to the struggle for voting rights, the resistance lives uneven into the 21st century, and whereas Black Americans have made invaluable contributions in Oregon's economic, political, spiritual, and cultural development while maintaining and promoting their own unique culture and history, and whereas we acknowledge and denounce the history of structural and institutional racism towards Black Americans in Oregon and throughout the United States, which has directly resulted in socioeconomic health and other disparities that persist to this day, and whereas Black Americans have sought ways to nurture and protect lives and for the autonomy of their physical and intellectual bodies through voluntary immigration, nonviolence, education, literature, sports, media, and legislation, whereas Black History Month serves to celebrate the accomplishments, culture, and contributions of Black community while honoring Black history, and whereas we as a community must work together to end discrimination, to achieve true equality to Black Oregonians, and build a McMinville where all residents can realize their full potential. Now therefore, I, Kim Morris, Mayor of McMinville, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month. Your eyes here. Now's the time for a public comment. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. And just so you know, we are going to do that. If there is follow-up, I'll assign it to a counselor or to a director or our city manager, and they will be following up with you and then in turn be following up with all the city councilors so we know that it happened and what the answers were. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature or chat feature and send a chat to the city recorder. Once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic.
Daniel, do we have anybody signed up?
We do, but before we start public comment, I would like to state for the record that we received email comments from Rodrigo Laguna, Caitlin Birch, Tanya Tompkins, and Lisa Macy Baker on behalf of the MAC PAC. Those comments were emailed to council and will be made part of the public record on the amended packet that will be posted on the city website tomorrow. First to speak, we have Cheryl Shocky.
Hello Cheryl. Cheryl and I went to school together, graduated together. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Those of you that were on the council prior, bear with me for repeating all my pickleball love to you. Those of you that are new, I hope you're ready for it. My name is Cheryl Shocky, and I was born and raised here in McMinville. I currently live on 22nd Street. After graduating MAC High School, I went all the way down to Mullenworth for college and promptly returned to MAC to teach and coach in the McMinville School District for 32 years. As a retired educator and proud member of the McMinville Pickleball Club, I am here to voice my strong support for the proposed bond to expand our city's park and recreation infrastructure. Our current facilities have served generations of McMinville residents, but it's time for an upgrade. The same pools, courts, and parks that I enjoyed as a child, along with Chris and Kim, and in many are, have been used by the two generations that have followed us. They're being used far longer than those buildings really were meant to be around. They're insufficient for our community. I don't think anybody's going to disagree with that. And I know you were talking a lot about the price. It's not going to get less expensive in the future. By passing this bond, we ensure that the next two generations will have access to modern, accessible spaces that reflect our city's commitment to social connection and well-being. Now I'm going to talk about pickleball. Pickleball stands out because it's accessible to all ages and abilities. It fosters community connections and promotes physical and social well-being. It's not just a game, it's a community builder, and the demand for the courts is higher than ever. We have all ages play on the six courts for our 300-plus members in this community. Just so you know, four people can play in a court at a time. The most heartwarming thing about it, though, is our group that embraces the youth and the elderly playing at the same time and socializing and having fun, and they just share an experience that enhances and improves everyone's mental health. Well, I'm going to take the next person's 15 seconds.
All right, go ahead and finish, you're fine.
Thank you. Who knew, I taught math, I was not, I didn't, would never profess to be a fast reader. Parks build stronger communities, you all know this. They offer safe spaces for youth, they bring our families together, they provide essential outlets for physical and emotional health. By approving this bond, we're making an investment in our city's future, one that prioritizes people connection and the joy of living here. Communities around us have services that McMinville does not have, and I just want to encourage you to keep moving forward. You will have backing from this community to support these new centers, this new rec center and the senior center. Those rooms are so tiny, Dan, that when I go there to play cribbage, we are crammed together and it doesn't feel good to be so close. The rooms are very small there. I've seen that place packed, you just need to go at the right time. 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Thank you. Daniel, do we have anybody else signed up to speak?
Next, we have Mike Burr.
Good evening. My name is Mike Burr, and I live at 15660 Mountview Way in MAC. I'm a member of First Baptist Church at the corner of First and Cowles, and I'm on the board at FBC that has overseen the low-barrier shelter program that is operated there for the last 15 years, and would note that I've also worked with indigent populations for over 50 years. This evening, what I would like to do is thank all of you here and the city who have been a part of the efforts along with Yamhill Community Action Program to open the ADP Shelter on Adams Street. For FBC, it has been a relief to hand off this program to organizations much more situated to address the broad needs of this segment of our citizenry. I want to commend everyone who has worked on developing the ADP Shelter program. I think it's an excellent example of how it takes a community of organizations and individuals to get things done. City, county, state, federal, private, business, nonprofits have all had their input to this program. I also want to note that we can't rest on our laurels. What has been achieved is a bare minimum of what is needed, some might say even a Band-Aid. The fact is emphasized by the death of one of our longtime shelter guests on Saturday night when temperatures were below 30 degrees. Addressing homelessness, there are many complex problems. Tonight, I would like to highlight just one of those that I encounter twice a week at our feeding program, and that is the need for adequate mental health alternatives to using the county jail as a mental health institution. The Oregon State Hospital's woeful lack of capacity to serve Oregon communities reverberates through every community in the state, making our county court system and jails expensive turnstiles for those in mental health crisis with no positive results except expense. It criminalizes mental health, it stigmatizes those suffering, and it is an expensive burden on the people of our city and county. And so I'd like to request that the city, the council, look to start building coalitions with other counties, other cities to create the political will within the state to expand statewide services that will give adequate care to the people in our community who are suffering mental health crisis and who then often turn to drugs at the same time. So we have this comorbidity, which is just insane and difficult to address. There's a lot more I could say. I will probably come back at some point and say more, but I would like to see us to be able to work cooperatively, not just within MAC but within the state, to address some of these core problems. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and I think we agree that the state needs to be involved with us, and I appreciate your comments, and we'll certainly keep that in mind when we work with them. Daniel, do we have anybody else?
Next is Lisa Macy Baker.
Lisa, how's the surgery recovery going?
You play a lot of racket sports, you do this. I'm an advocate for all of it. I've had a great use out of this shoulder, and I'm going to get more thanks to Dr. Rains. So, thanks for allowing me to be here. You didn't start me yet, did you? Okay, good. And I just, I want to say that I'm speaking on behalf of the MAC PAC members that you see written on my written statement that I submitted, but I'm here to echo much of what Kevin stated, that we're ready and willing to find a path to yes. And there's several community members who've given the last six years, who've addressed all the questions that you guys did today, and sat with it for six, you know, for years upon years and deliberated, you know. My first, when I was like, actually Diane's in the crowd, I was like, we hit Portman Park, that's a great site. And then we went through all of it, and we went through all the details and the environmental assessment and so forth, and we realized, well, this isn't going to be a great site. So, we have done our homework, we did a lot of work, we collaborated, we used professionals to help get us to where we are. And regardless of that crazy dollar amount, I think we're all wanting to tell you that we're at the table, and we want to be at the table to find a path to yes, because the time is now. Things are not good at either site. It's efficient to put a new building together. We have, we do have a beautiful site. When you put it all together, it's fairly centrally located, there's bike lanes, there's an option for a bus route out there, it's tied to our most beautiful outdoor public asset. And it just takes time, it takes time to get over the nostalgia. I've been there, I know what it's like, I was born and raised as well, and that was my first intention too. Let's see what we can do and keep it here, because it's such a great location. But I'm also trying to see into the future. And even if that future doesn't allow my kids to recreate at a new facility, I certainly want, and I think the MAC PAC members want to see, the future of McMinville grow in appropriate ways. So, I also hope you guys take a peek, visit McMinville, recently worked with Oregon State Sustainable Tourism Lab to get some polling data, and I really, the numbers that came up were pretty impressive in favor of new facilities. You can see that in the written, I'll share that slide deck with you guys as well. But I think there's also a lot of positive data out there, and I don't want that to underwrite what the, you know, I want that to be the overriding message moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Daniel, do we have anybody else signed up?
Next is Amanda Pawonka.
Good evening, Amanda.
Hello, my name's Amanda Pawonka, I live in McMinville. Congratulations, Kim, on becoming mayor. I just have a couple things to say. Number one, I think the City of McMinville needs to trim the fat and sell the Nelson House. It's a derelict building that's falling into disrepair, and it's just sitting there. I know you guys had a whole list of things to do to it, and at this point, with the debt that McMinville has, it just kind of makes sense in my mind, so I'm just putting that out there. Number two, absolutely, we need new facilities and everything. Thanks to MCM TV, I was able to watch the work session that just happened. And yeah, a lot of money, a lot of things to do, a lot of questions. Coming from a business side of things, because I'm a business owner, I think that we should put more emphasis on the private sector, meaning I feel like this whole, by the way, thank you so much MAC PAC for all the work that they've done, holy cow, wow. But like, with the private sector, if we can be encouraging to big businesses like Langer's, Big Owls, a giant bowling alley, trampoline park, these are all suggestions from my children, by the way, I have three kids, laser tag, just anything that the community can, we can send our kids to that's indoors, safe, will, I know, alleviate a lot of the stuff that we want this rec center to, you know, produce. Even just indoor putt-putt golf, I mean, that would be really fun. But I feel like in McMinville, we're so tight-knit and so like man-paw only, we tend to shun giant box stores and all the things, which I do appreciate, living here for 10 years. But there comes a time when it's like, I mean, our bowling alley is now going to be going away. So... So I feel like you guys on the council, I don't know, maybe I'm just saying this to the universe, maybe there's a billionaire out there, hmm, who lives next door, or some sort of anyone can come in and invest in our community in that way, make it cute and fun. But I believe truly that if we have more private sector businesses stepping up to the plate to provide services for our children, I think that would take off a lot of pressure that you guys are feeling. Also, just off the cuff, I did read the article about the new rec center and everything, and like, having a giant gym is great, but like, we have Planet Fitness, we have Excel Fitness, we have a ton of private business owners that have little baby gyms, you know, there's already that. Anyway, thank you so much. Thanks for listening to me. You guys are awesome.
Thank you, Amanda. Daniel?
Next is Marnie Cochran.
My name is Marnie Cochran. I'm at 182 Northwest Valleys Edge Street. I'm a little nervous, public speaking, so if my voice is shaky.
You'll do fine.
My husband and I have not lived in McMinnville as long as many of you. We are Oregon natives, though. We both grew up down in Corvallis and used the Dixon Rec Center at Oregon State frequently as youth. When we moved to McMinnville, we fell in love with the charm, the small-town feel and the lovely people that live here. I was a bit bummed there's not a Costco, it's kind of a drive. Anyway, that's a discussion for another day. When we first moved here, we made friends with someone who was on the MAC PAC, and we were very, very excited about the prospect of a new recreation facility. And that's been, you know, there was some delays due to COVID and whatnot. But my children are still young enough to hopefully use whatever is put forward. We were really hoping that something can be done. We currently use, my children are nine years old, I have twins who are six and a two-year-old. And we use a lot of what McMinnville Parks and Rec has to offer. We go to the pool a lot, my son is on the swim, in the swim club. We do gymnastics, we use the Tiny Tots facility. We're, I do Zumba, my husband plays basketball at the community center. We are using these facilities and on a weekly basis. We're there all the time. And I see a desperate need for investment in our children and their ability to recreate safely and comfortably, and I see it as an investment in their future, and I think the time is now to do this. I'm pretty anxious to get something so that my children will be able to use it. I'm willing to, you know, foot my share of the bill, because I do see it as an investment in my children and the children of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, and you did great, by the way. Daniel?
Next, we have Cindy Smith.
Welcome.
Hi, I am Cindy Smith, and I am wanting to get cameras at the swimming pool. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Hi, this is, I'm Cindy Smith. I'm a single mother of two girls, 13 and 16, and I am asking for video cameras to be put up at the swimming pool, Dragon Park as well. I thought we had them, but I'm shocked that we don't. My understanding is that federal and state laws do permit this as they are places of entrance, as you guys know, but anyway, because no privacy is expected. I did find out that we do not have them there, but we do have them at the library. I didn't know. Two Wednesdays back, I had two, I had my two daughters to pick up at eight. So I had one daughter prepared to come out 10 minutes early from the swimming pool. I sat there for about 25 minutes at least. No other children were out yet because they were going to be out after eight. I watched a man come from the library, walk up between the library and the swimming pool. He loitered for about five to 10 minutes, just staring about. Then he wandered to the other side, between where I was parked and the swimming pool. He went along the path, and then he went about five feet out from the path closer to the Dragon Park. He stood there for at least 10 minutes before my daughter came out. I had her come out early, and against my advisement, she was only wearing shorts and a t-shirt. But anyway, as she passed him, he was standing here, she went along the walkway, and he turned. He turned to where she didn't see that he was behind her. And so he followed her all the way to my car. I just watched, because usually I react too fast. So, anyway, she walked out, got to the car, he was still only a few feet behind her. When she opened up the door, he kind of just realized, and then he kicked his foot or something. I think he was high on something, but it wasn't like meth or weed, so I don't know. But he was definitely focused. I should not have looked away from my writing here. So, he knew exactly what he was doing, but yet he didn't care. He was on a definite mission. Once she was actually getting in the car, as I said, that's when he kicked out a leg to do an awkward turnaround, and then he walked a little bit over to the concrete, and then just stood there loitering, looking away, knowing that I had seen him. I needed to go get my daughter, my other daughter, but of course, I was heated up, and I went out there and approached him. I gave him the benefit of the doubt, even though I knew what happened, and I asked him first if he was waiting for somebody in the pool. I was shocked, he said no. He didn't really care about what I had to say. I went off on him and that, you know, then I had to go get my daughter. I tried to call the swimming pool to warn them, but they did not answer, so they didn't get any warning. I called the MPD, which I love, the non-emergency, who is always so helpful, and I'm hoping they made it there and found him. If something had happened, we would have had accountability, and the person's description, all we had was mine, which I felt was decent, but still doesn't help anything, because unfortunately, from my understanding, the police have to catch people in the act. So that would have really helped. Enough of these people, let's see, if I was there, though, I know there was no doubt, she would have been attacked. He must have thought she was going to walk down into the park. It still concerns me for other children. I see other children and no other parents that do not get their children. They have them walk home in the dark, and it freaks me out. So I stay at places and schools all the time, waiting to make sure kids are home or I get them a ride home. Lastly, this would help protect our kids. It is a very common area for people doing drugs. I feel that it would help deter the loiterers with warrants especially. If they see cameras up and stuff like that, they won't want to be seen as much. They come from other towns where we don't know them as well, because they're getting away from that, I think. Our kids don't have many places, as everybody's saying, to hang out in town. The park and the library are free. The swimming pool is one of the few activities that we have for our children in MAC, and it's a very strong place for these people, the predators. So please strongly consider this, as it is very important for our children and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm sorry.
I went over.
You're okay. Thank you for sharing that. Director Berg, could you work with Director Muir and respond to her about the situation? Thank you, I appreciate that. Daniel, anybody else?
That is everyone that has signed up.
Okay, is there anybody on the phone or Zoom, anything? Nope. Okay. Thank you for everybody that spoke tonight. The next thing we have is the committees. So committees have been assigned by myself, and there are a couple changes that aren't on here, I believe, that we had to do, and that is Counsel Peralta and Counselor Painter, we needed to switch a landscape review, so Jessica, excuse me, Counselor Payne will be on the landscape review, and Counselor Peralta will now be on the Affordable Housing Committee. So those are two changes, if you guys could change that for me. Thank you. All right, so now we have reports from department heads. I'm going to start with, oh, go ahead. Yes, thank you. Thank you, sorry about that. So reports from counselors, do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Any now?
Uh, I found out I had meetings the next day in less than 24 hours, so. So I did attend the Historic Landmarks Committee, or, sorry, I did not attend Historic Landmark Committee, because did not meet this month, but we have two meetings scheduled for February. I've got a personal orientation scheduled for later this week. Affordable Housing Committee, we welcomed new committee members. Rachel Flores was elected as the chair, and I was elected as vice chair. And in that, we reviewed application scoring guidelines to access the affordable housing grants that were created by the construction excise tax. Roughly, there's about $1 million in there between two different grant application areas. Housing strategy has not met yet. And then I was also able to go to the MCM 11. We welcomed again new committee members that evening. The staff report is focusing on the development of more partnerships. This is specifically working with businesses in the community to create content for both MCM and then for those businesses to use as well. They are also, because of the retirement of Howie Harkema, they are looking for a new regular host of a local interest show, and so if anybody out there really wants to do a local interest show, they would love to speak with you. And that is all I have.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. EVLC met. We elected our chair and our vice chair, Carson Benner Chair, Counselor Chenoweth as vice chair. We went over our successes of the last year and discussed a desire to see some, we talked about what we actually tried to accomplish, but we didn't have numbers to verify that we successfully accomplished what we did, you know, what happened with the grant money? Did it actually accomplish what we were trying to accomplish? So we discussed wanting some more accountability there. We also discussed wanting to make sure that we have our goals set for the next year. To that end, we discussed several potential topics, gathering of information, and I'm going to tease that till next month, because we have our next EVLC, will include two speakers with the focus on trying to set our agenda for the next year. And so at that point, I'll tell you what the agenda is going to look like for the EVLC.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just appointed to the Planning Commission and Affordable Housing Committees, so I will be attending those in February. Council of Governments, I did not attend the most recent Legislative Committee meeting. However, on the main business for Council of Governments, the annual Council of Governments Dinner is March 5th at the Willamette Heritage Room in Salem. The Council of Governments is accepting nominations for three annual awards to recognize elected officials, staff, and innovative projects, supporting and enhancing the principles of intergovernmental cooperation. They will be accepting nominations until the end of this week, January 31st, so if staff or members of the council, or even members of the community, have projects that reflect intergovernmental cooperation in McMinnville or in Yamhill County that you'd like to nominate, you can either send me an email, or, that would probably be the best way to do it, is just to send me an email, or if you're on this day, as she would have gotten the COG connections with information on how to send that directly to the COG. The recipients will be announced at the dinner that I just mentioned on March 5th. Thank you.
Counselor Gary?
Thank you. Let's see, working on a new slate of them here. Nothing really to report. Stormwater, wastewater will be meeting again February 18th, and I'll be in attendance. MIRAC will be the first Wednesday, so in between meetings, I was assigned as alternate or Dan second for the TSP, so hopefully we can meet this year on that project, if we get it off the ground and visit McMinnville. I'll be meeting with Director Gibson before their first meeting next month, so getting rolling. Thank you.
Counselor Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. Lipstick, the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council met last week. The county's deflection program is fully operable with the repeal of Measure 110. So if you're not familiar, that's deflecting people who need to access treatment away from the criminal justice system in order to access treatment. Of the 60-ish folks who qualified for the deflection program, 15 individuals took the opportunity to show up for their intake assessment, which has to be conducted within 14 days. As of the Lipstick meeting, roughly eight individuals were actively engaged in the deflection program. There was a grant request to shift cost savings from, cost savings from the JRI, JRI Formula Grant Cycle to fund a gender-specific, trauma-informed parole probation officer. And then Landscape Review also met last week and approved the landscape plan for 2125 Northwest Second Street, which got a lot of positive feedback for being creative. And lastly, I'm looking forward to serving on the DEIAC. Thank you.
Counselor Tocowski?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've been assigned to the four different committees. YCOM is one of them, UGB Land Use efficiencies, Transportation System Plan Updates, and the Airport Commission. The only one that's met so far was the Airport Commission last Thursday at 6:00 PM. At that time, Mr. Mark Fowle was elected the chair, there was a discussion of the budget and the airport master plan, and so that's into my report tonight.
None of my committees have met, but I do have a couple things, as not an official committee to report on, but I probably will be reporting on it, is all the mayors in Yamhill County now meet on a monthly basis, so we have a mayor's collaboration. So we take turns hosting, so we'll be able to work with each other and guide each other and kind of throw things around as to how to work within the county. I'm also been told that we have a liaison from the county now. County Commissioner Kit Johnston is going to be a liaison to us. Bubba King shared that, so I hope that's right. So I'm excited to be able to talk to all of you. And then Parkway Committee, we did, Chris, you weren't able to attend that, but I did, and so they're working on the bypass, which is the Newburgh-Dundee bypass, and you'll see some staging happening in Newburgh at the end of the bypass right now, where they're working on the next stage, which is exciting. And we heard that the costs went up probably 20% with the governor putting in the plan, so putting in some additional costs for labor unions. So, anyway, those are what I had, and I'd like to go to department heads, and I'm going to start with Amanda. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. One item to report, just to remind you that next Monday, the 3rd of February, Katie Henry will join us as our new finance director. She's excited to join the team. The finance team and Muni Court team are excited to have her. Scott Burke is excited to go back to being the IS director, and the IS team is excited to have Scott come back as the full-time IS director. I just want to acknowledge that all of those folks took on additional work and duties during the course of the interim, and I am grateful and proud to have them as team members. Thank you, Mayor.
Attorney?
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. As I mentioned last time, we are in the midst of a couple of trainings with regard to appropriate spending of opioid settlement dollars. The first training was for elected officials. It was brief, and we had some representation from Counselor Cunningham, and it has since been circulated to the rest of you for later viewing. I hope you've had a chance to take a look. I found it to be very informative, and I think, hopefully, a really good preparer for this coming Monday, when we are doing an all-day, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, work session collaboration on the same topic. The idea here will be more about the community itself, what the issues are here in McMinnville and Yamhill County more broadly, and what community partners are doing in this space right now. So hopefully seeing areas of greatest need and potentially areas of greatest impact for these dollars. This conversation will be best served the more that community partners and elected officials are able to collaborate and participate, so we encourage attendance. You may have seen that there is circulating a Zoom link, but that will only be for viewing. It will not be for participation. So again, we're going to encourage people to make as much of it as they possibly can. In and out of sessions is okay, coming and going, I think you've seen the schedule as well, that would be fine. And barring your ability to be there in person, that Zoom link will hopefully help facilitate some more of it. It'll be a bit of a disaster. It'll be a bit of a disaster if there are instances of breakout groups and breakout communications, but it should be something. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Byrd?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. The library is interested in lots of types of literacy, not just about reading. We're really focused in the next couple of months on financial literacy, as we have for many years. We're partnering with AARP to offer tax assistance. We're also, this year, excited to be partnering with the Oregon Department of Revenue to -- they're hosting some do-it-yourself tax programs at the library for people to come and learn how to do their taxes on their own with the assistance of those volunteers. We also have some financial workshops for children, teens, and adults to learn money skills. We're having this weekend, there'll be the basics of credit scores for teens. And then we also have a really exciting program in partnership with a grant from the American Library Association, Thinking Money for Kids, where there's various games and activities for kids to become money smart. And I was -- it was mentioned that I've been remiss in bringing Library of Things examples to you. And while I don't have an example tonight, I will stick with the money theme in mentioning that we have a number of metal detectors, which you could take around to various park locations and, you know, find metal and coins. And then if you find a lot of coins, you can actually check out a coin counter sorter and wrapper at the library as well.
Thank you for that information. Director Richards?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. As Mayor Morris alluded to, we spent today in Salem at the Capitol with a contingent of our elected officials, meeting with our state legislators to talk about the city's legislative priorities for the next year. They were good meetings, I believe, in terms of creating the relationships and also putting McMinnville's needs in front of the legislators. So we appreciate the time for those who went with us today. We will continue to do that work, and we appreciate the partnership with our state representatives for that.
Thank you. Director Hunsaker?
Nothing to report from Public Works tonight.
Thank you. Director Muir, do you have anything to share besides what you already have?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. I have mixed emotions to share the news with you that we have two retirements happening at the Aquatic Center. Jason Hafner and Rob Porter, both pillars of our community, and if you have dipped a toe in the water, you have benefited from their work at the city of McMinnville, have both decided to retire as of April 4th. We'll be having a celebration for them, and you'll all be invited to it. With those two leaving the Aquatic Center, we will have 65 years of experience walk out the doors of the McMinnville Aquatic Center, and we will miss them tremendously. And I hope you join me in thanking them for their years of dedication to the city.
Absolutely. What a loss. Appreciate having them as long as we did. Thank you. All right, so the next thing we have is our consent agenda. And before I ask about that, I just want to appreciate our city recorders, because now we have minutes to each one of our meetings, and we will have them the following meeting. So I'm excited to have that and appreciate it. So thank you for your time. Okay, so we have a consent agenda to consider the draft minutes of January 11th, 2025, and consider the draft minutes of January 14th, 2025 at our regular meeting. Does anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda?
I would like to remove both, please.
Okay. Then remove. So now, if I'm correct, we're going to look at them individually? Okay. So first, to consider the draft of the -- do I have a motion to consider the draft of the minutes of January 11th, 2025?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second? So discussion?
May I go first?
Yes. Counselor Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just confused by, let's see, the last paragraph, page two of the minutes from the work session on Saturday. The paragraph says Ms. Novak went over the council priorities for 2024 and received a high-level status from department directors on each goal. She had the council do the dot exercise. We did the dot exercise. I am confused about the rest, like the other sentence. So I'm not -- it wasn't clear to me that we did much in the way of goal setting. So I'm not going to object if somebody wants to approve that, but I will be abstaining.
Okay, Counselor Payne, can you again tell me exact -- oh, at the very bottom here on?
Yeah, it's the last, it's like the third to last paragraph on page 18 of our packets.
So Ms. Novak asked each counselor to share what's important to them by answering the following?
The next paragraph.
Ms. Novak went over the council priorities for 2024 and received a high-level status from department directors on each goal. She had the council do the dot exercise. And Ms. Novak led through parting thoughts of the group. So do you want to -- are you making a recommendation to scratch that out of the minutes?
The first sentence.
Okay, the first sentence. Went over the council priorities.
Yeah, is it supposed to say council priorities for 2024 or 2025?
No, they were last year's priority goals, and they were in the -- there were slides, and it was the last year's goals, so she went over those. And then each department head went through, like, high level, like, this is where we're at. This is the status of the goal.
Okay.
Not 2025 goals.
I think they were the four items that were on the screen.
Okay, so I feel like the -- okay, I'm confused because it felt like that sentence was part of the dot exercise with, like, all the postings on the wall. So I just wanted clarity. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Point of clarification, is the counselor satisfied with the minutes?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes for January 11th, 2025. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Do we want to poll?
Aren't we having to do these all by roll call now?
Yeah.
Thank you. A new roll call. Please.
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Chakowsky?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So now we're going to move on to the minutes. Consider the minutes of January 14th, 2025 at the City Council Regular Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Counselor Chenoweth? Any discussion? Counselor Payne?
Resolution, under Resolutions 7A, on page 22 of the packets, right near the top. It looks like I got two votes. It says I voted aye, and I also abstained on Resolution 2025-01.
Good catch.
I'm sure it's just a typo, but I don't recall how I voted.
Yeah, that can be corrected.
Thank you. Then?
So which is the correct?
I was going to say, and do you recall how you voted?
I do not. I'm pretty sure I abstained if?
I believe you abstained as well.
Yes, I did. Actually, was that the one I abstained on, or was it the budget? Oh, yeah, the city of -- it was the City of McMinnville Budget Committee. Yes, correct. I did abstain.
Any other discussion? So do I have a motion to accept the January 14th, 2025 minutes with the deletion of Counselor Payne's name being under aye in the minutes?
I'd make that motion.
I'd second it.
So Counselor Geary, second from Counselor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please talk to Daniel.
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Chakowsky?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
I would like to vote aye, Daniel.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
And Council President Peralta?
Aye.
All right. Passed. Thank you. All right, so we're going to consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance 5157. And does any counselor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? Hearing none? Okay, we will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5157, and we're going to have City Attorney David Lichtenberg talk to us.
Would you like to ask if anybody objects to me reading by title only?
Sure. Anybody reject? By title only? Be nice.
Please, please.
Hearing no objections, yes, please read by title only.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance number 5157, an ordinance adopting the relevant portions of the June 2024 Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan, otherwise adopted by Resolution 2024-38 as a supplemental document to the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. So now we'll call on Heather Richards, Community Development Director, Susan Muir, Parks and Recreation Director, and Attorney David Lichtenberg to City Attorney to present to us.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'll start the presentation. Susan is here as well for any specific questions about the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan. Bill Kabeisman, I believe, is in the webinar, so I don't know if we can open up the webinar and allow him in as well. He helped us write the findings and is here for any questions relative to that. Yes, and am I -- okay, that -- Thank you. So as specified in the title, this is the -- this Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan was adopted by the City Council via Resolution Number 2024-38 in June of last year. In that resolution itself, there -- sorry, my PowerPoint is not -- in the resolution itself, there is an exception saying that the council directs staff to begin preparing the Comprehensive Plan amendments related to the PROS Plan for future council consideration. Nothing in this resolution is or shall be construed as a final decision by the council that concerns the adoption amendment or application of statewide planning goals, a comprehensive plan provision, or a land use regulation. So the ordinance in front of you tonight actually achieves these next two steps that were part of your resolution from June of 2024, and is looking at bringing that PROS Plan that was adopted at that time into our land use program. The reason why we want to bring it into our land use program is because it allows us to identify the future location of planned parks based on adopted community values. It allows us to require land and park improvements with land use applications. It forecasts future park land need based on adopted acreage levels of service per capita, and it also provides land use guiding goals and policies for park recreation and open space planning. And if we don't go through a Comprehensive Plan acknowledgement process to bring this into our Comprehensive Plan, we can't use it for those provisions in our land use program. So ordinance number 5157 is a legislative initiative to support the June 2024 PROS Plan that's already been adopted by the city via resolution. It requires it as part of our acknowledged Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. It's a recommendation for approval that came through the Planning Commission in a public hearing process at the Planning Commission. They hosted a public hearing on November 7th, 2024, and they deliberated on December 5, 2024. You have as part of the staff report for the record, which we need to bring to you per our ordinance, the meeting minutes from both the Planning Commission meetings on November 7th and December 5th, and then the public testimony that was provided to the Planning Commission. So per our ordinance, we bring to you all the information that was provided to the Planning Commission and then their recommendation to you for consideration. Our Comprehensive Plan itself is our guiding document for our land use program. It has three separate volumes. Volume one is the background information, so this is the data. This is the evidentiary basis for our goals and policies for our land use program, which will then inform how we implement them through ordinances. Volume two is the goals and policies themselves, and then volume three is our implementing ordinances, which is our McMinnville Municipal Code, as well as our maps that we've adopted, our Comprehensive Plan map, our zoning map, and then our McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan. So the ordinance in front of you has five exhibits associated with it. It looks at adopting the PROS Plan as a supplemental document to the Comprehensive Plan. It looks at amending volume one of that comp plan, so bringing more background information into the Comprehensive Plan to support the new Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan. It looks at amending volume two of the comp plan, so additional goals and policies to reflect the community's values through this process. It looks at amending volume three of the Comprehensive Plan, which is our framework plan, which was adopted as a map for our land use program. And then it has Exhibit E, which is the findings and decision document. So as you vote on the ordinance itself, you're voting on those different exhibits coming into our Comprehensive Plan process, as well as the findings in the decision document. So the PROS Plan update will replace the 1999 Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan in our land use process. Some of the changes in the PROS Plan update in front of you tonight is it updates the data of the existing parks inventory, the condition of the existing parks inventory, and how that parks inventory serves the community in terms of proximity and access, safety, and maintenance. It also adds program goals and policies relative to maintenance and safety when considering programming and equity throughout the city relative to our parks program, as equity considerations are based on socioeconomics, demographics, population density, when determining park recreation and open space need and investments throughout the city. It looks at reducing the acreage level of service from 14 acres per 1,000 people to 10.3 acres per 1,000 people of public park land to serve our community's needs. That's important for our growth planning processes. And then it also looks at planned park programming in our UGB expansion areas, which we identified in our McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan, that's memorialized in our framework plan and reduces the acreage by 50%. The purpose of the PROS Plan itself is to update the inventory and the existing conditions. It documents the needs and priorities for the community. It identifies the community-supported vision and goals, and it recommends projects and policies for the next 20 years in terms of how our parks program serves our existing community and growing community. The table of contents is divided into five different chapters, and there are four appendices as well, and you've been provided both the planned document and the appendices. Quickly to go through some of the information that is being recommended to come into our Comprehensive Plan process for volume one of our comp plan, which is the background information, we're looking at bringing in the data specific to the parks itself. So we're looking at the park condition assessments. We're looking at the vision, goals, and objectives that came out of the community planning process. It was a two-year process for this project. We're looking at the goals and objectives that came through that process as well. We're looking at the level of service determination, so there's data in the plan itself that talks about how the city came to the conclusion of reducing the level of service per capita from 14 acres per 1,000 to 10.3 acres per 1,000. It looks at the equity mapping that we did to identify the program and how it serves our community from the factors of equity that's discussed in the plan. It has a park inventory of our existing parks. It also has appendices that describe the public engagement process that took place to put the PROS Plan together. And then it has an inventory, an appendix that looks at improvements at existing parks that are planned for the future, proposed new parks in terms of neighborhood parks, and proposed new parks in terms of community parks and greenways. This is all important data that we need for findings to support the land use program when we're moving this forward. So that all comes into volume one of our Comprehensive Plan. It also has language in it that describes the new programmed parks and proposed new greenways and how they'll serve the community. It looks at that language as -- an example is from the Foxridge Road Neighborhood Park, where it describes as the development of a five-acre minimum park to serve existing park service gaps, as well as future development in this growth area. So the narrative allows some flexibility on how these So the narrative allows some flexibility on how these parks will develop and serve the community in the future. It has a future parks and recreation system map that identifies approximate areas of where, where future parks should be located to meet the needs of the community and our equity lens. And then in volume two, our goals and policies, it proposes some amendments to the existing goals and policies to support the updated plan. So the updated plan is rooted in an, in an equity filter, as well as it's intended to reflect the current and projected needs of the community. And so the goals, amendments that you see in front of you reflect that. We went into the goals and policies and amended the existing ones to reflect the, the new update, and then added some as well. The added policies are relative to equity planning, including ensuring that underserved populations have equitable access to safe and well-maintained parks and open space. In terms of volume three, the amendment that we need to make is to the framework plan itself. This focuses on the UGB expansion areas that were part of our 2020 UGB expansion project. And due to the fact that we're reducing the level of service from 14 acres per thousand capita to 10.3 acres per thousand capita, this then reduces the need for future parkland to serve that UGB expansion area from 254 acres to 127 acres. The framework plan itself has the redlined amendments in it for you. We provided that as a copy of your staff report, as well as the final document, which has those amendments memorialized. This is important for our future work in terms of land use efficiencies, when we're going to start looking at the UGB expansion areas, and how we can achieve land use efficiencies there to accommodate our now new land need that we have for housing, commercial, and industrial land need. And if there's less need for parkland, we're able to reassign that to other land uses.
Mayor, may I ask a question real quick while we're on this slide?
Counselor Chenoweth.
On the government section, what's the intended thought there?
Oh, so part of the, and this is, this is the table that came out of the, the 2020 adoption of the, the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan. If you remember, that was based on work that was done in 1996 to 2003 to identify land need. So the government side is future land need to, to support governor, government services in the, in that growth area.
Would that include or not include a fire station?
Yeah, pub, public facilities, yes, it would include that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The framework plan map itself, that's, that's adopted into that document, also needs to be amended, and the recommendation for that is in the document for you. It deletes a community park in the Fox Ridge Road area, and it deletes a neighborhood park in the Booth Bend area. We have a table in the framework plan that identifies not only the types of parks that were intended to be in the different areas. So if you remember, the framework plan has, has assigned different areas that we do area planning for, and then the area plan, planning will then sort of describe how that land comes into the city and serves the city and meets our land need. So there's a table in there that talks about not only the different types of classification of parks and where they needed to be assigned, but also the amount of acreage for each of those classifications of parks. Those have been amended to reflect the new assignment of parks based on the PROS Plan from June 20 of 24. The alignment of plans, we had a discussion at the Planning Commission about the alignment of plans, since we're coming in and amending the framework plan, and we've already have adopted one area plan. So our framework plan is sort of the upper-level planning process that then sort of defines how these areas move forward on a higher concept level. The area plan, we then do, and we take it down to the next level of sort of, of detail. And then after the area plan is done and adopted by the city, landowners can then elect to annex into the city, and they have to, they have to show a master plan as how they're meeting that area plan. So there's a string that goes through all this process that makes sure that we're meeting our land needs that we originally identified in that framework plan. So there was some discussion at the Planning Commission level about the Fox Ridge Road Area Plan, and its alignment with the framework plan based on making these amendments. So if you remember, the Fox Ridge Road Area Plan was adopted by, by the city last year. There is discussion in there about parks and how it reflects back into the framework plan. So the Planning Commission asked city staff to go back and look at that, make sure that it is aligned together. The language in the Fox Ridge Road Area Plan had a sentence that we had originally recommended to be deleted, which said the Fox Ridge Road area also includes several natural and geographic features that provide an excellent opportunity for a natural resource community park. So the community park was the defining piece there in terms of the classification. It didn't, if you recall, we talked about the need to, to remove a community park from the Fox Ridge Road area based on the June 2024 PROS Plan vision for this area. And the, in the highlighted box there is actually what was described for the Fox Ridge Road area for parks. So the Fox Ridge Road Area Plan Project Advisory Committee had a lot of discussion about whether that natural park that's over on the western side of the Fox Ridge Road area as described is really a community park, as we think of community parks, or is it more of a natural resource area? And so at the end, they concluded it was a natural resource park. A natural resource park is different than a community park. So already, the Fox Ridge Road Area Plan had just, had, had a tension that was different than the framework plan until we amended, amended. So this amendment actually brings it more into alignment. So that natural resource park would fall under the classification of greenways and natural areas and not a community park moving forward. So there isn't, there isn't a concern with alignment of the area plan to the framework plan with the proposed amendments before you tonight. It actually brings it more into alignment this way. The one difference that we're recommending is that that last sentence, the Fox Ridge Road area, also includes several natural and geographic features that provide an excellent opportunity for a natural resource community park. We're simply recommending that you delete "community" out of that sentence to keep that sentence, sentence in there to reflect what the Fox Ridge Road Area Plan is, as adopted, is intended to do. We did have public testimony at the Planning Commission. We received a letter from Mark Davis dated November 6, 2024, and then we received an email from Rob Halliburton, representing Friends of Yam Hill County, dated November 6, 2024, as well. The issues raised in that public testimony was that the number of acres reduced in the UGB expansion area per the PROS Plan did not align with the, the math that, and this was from Mark Davis, from the math that Mark was seeing in the plan, and he had questions about it. There was also an issue raised that the parks on buildable acre, that, that parkland is all right now assigned to buildable acres, and it should be assigned to unbuildable acres as well. And then there was a question about Comprehensive Plan Policy Number 170.18. We went through the testimony with the Planning Commission in terms of the number of acre, acres in the framework plan. We identified that Mark was using math based, based on an old population figure, and the new population figure actually reflects what the PROS, June 2024 PROS Plan was planning into, and the new numbers reflect that. He then testified orally at the same, same evening and accepted that as, as the explanation for the difference in the acreage. In terms, and you see here a map that's, a table that sort of lines all of that. In terms of the buildable acres versus unbuildable acres, this has been a longstanding conversation here at the city of McMinnville. It was also testimony provided through that 2003 UGB process that went through the legal process and that we just went through in terms of finally adopting it in 2020. So it really revolves around decision-making relative to park locations. The June 2024 PROS Plan and the 1999 Plan both talked about the need for park locations not being determined by buildable versus unbuildable acreage, but really in terms of how those parks serve the community, in terms of access and equity. And so the determination of where they're located isn't a first determination of, let's put it in unbuildable acres. It's a first determination of, we need parks within a certain distance of residential homes. So both plans talked about, we need parks, we need every home to be within a half mile of a, of a park program. And then we go through this sort of series of, this is how we're serving the community, and this is where these parks should be located to serve them. And then based on that, that's how we, that's how we finally defined how, where the parks are located. In the June 2024 Plan, there's additional equity principles that are coming into play in terms of those future parks locations, and that's a determining factor in that final map that's in the plan. But it looks at socio-economic demographics, underrepresented populations, and density of residential development. And there's a chapter in the plan that, that has the mapping for all of that to demonstrate that as a basis for it. Also, we have recently learned that in our special flood hazard areas, or our floodway and floodplain, we can no longer put parks there. It's protected by a recent Endangered Species Act lawsuit and a FEMA settlement mandate that looks at no net loss of pervious area and vegetation without doing a Endangered Species Act assessment. So we are able to put nat, nature trails in there, but program parks that would remove trees and put pavement down and roads and things of that nature, we're no longer able to do. And then unbuildable acreage that's quoted as in our UGB expansion areas that's available for parks also includes the actual waterway, so the, the waterways themselves, some steep slopes that, as we go through the area planning process, I'm sure, it happened with the Fox Ridge Road area, and I'm sure it will happen with others, they're too steep to have public parks on them, and then protected habitats. The policies about locations that are in the plan exist, talk about where we should locate them in terms of being adjacent to neighborhood activity centers, and then we've added a few new ones to, to refine that. That the city of McMinnville shall strive to provide access to public and private green space and natural areas within a half-mile radius of most residents. The city of McMinnville should plan for the location of parks and the proximity of underrepresented, underserved neighborhoods and/or high-density development. So that, that policy reflects the new value system that's reflected in the PROS Plan update. The policy that the testimony pointed to, that we need to put parks that are not neighborhood parks and community parks in our unbuildable acreage, actually is not a mandate. It talks about that linear parks, greenways, open space trails, and special use parks are appropriate recreational uses of floodplain land to connect community and other park, other park types, provided that the design and location of such, such uses can occur with minimum impacts on the environmentally sensitive lands. We have moved forward with a, suggested amendment for that policy as well, to reduce it to parks, private, and public, and flood zones shall be managed and designed to work with natural systems, maximize mitigation potential, and designed to adapt to changes in the natural systems. That's reflecting both how we manage our floodplains, as well as the new FEMA mandate. And then when we were going through this process, through the, we recently had an appeal process on our, our more recent UGB, our more recent growth planning land need analysis, where this same issue was brought up. And from the state, both the Director of the Department of Land Conservation and Development, as well as the Land Conservation and Development Commission, both came out with rulings that the city is not required to put parks on their unbuildable acreage, but they should be looking at opportunities based on our locational values and goals. There was testimony about comp plan policy number 170.18. This is a new policy being provided as a recommendation to you, and it states, notwithstanding the identification of land in the PROS Plan as appropriate for acquisition by the city as publicly owned parkland, the Parks and Recreation Director has the authority to not acquire such land if the acquisition of such land will not meet the needs and interests of the city based on the analysis of the standards and the analysis of the PROS Plan. We had a joint work session with both the Planning Commission and the City Council on October 22nd, 2024, to discuss this particular policy. The Council and the Planning Commission reviewed the pros and cons and provided direction to move forward with this as an amendment to the goals and policy document.
Just one moment. Director Richards. Counselor Chenoweth has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for you. Prior to 170 dot 118 being implemented, who, if anybody, had such authority to not acquire lands in that case?
I'm going to defer that.
Yeah, it wasn't specifically addressed, so there, that, that authority wasn't identified.
So if, if we had a situation where we didn't want to acquire such lands, how would that process have looked?
It was messy. There wasn't any clear authority, and we just sort of had to hack our way through it. The, the reason this policy is in place is to provide more focus and clarity and make sure that that intent, the, the primary department director, the steward of the PROS Plan, is the Parks and Recreation Director, and it was the collective decision that that was the best approach moving forward to make the policy clear.
So the way it stands right now, we're, we're at 10, 10.4 acres per thousand, and
Three, but yes.
10 point?
Three.
Three, sorry, thank you. And if we decide we don't want to acquire the land, that would bring us to that 10.3. We've given the authority to just the Park and Rec Director to make that call?
No, we still, we still have the policy direction to meet that standard. So it's not about not meeting that acres per thousand standard. It's about which properties are best suited to help us meet that standard.
Okay, thank you.
Is it her, her decision, or does it come to the council?
Ultimately, property acquisition is approved by the council.
Thank you. Director Richards? Just a moment. Did you have another question, Counselor Chenoweth? Okay. Director Richards.
Okay, thank you. So the options for you as City Council, when we bring you a legislative amendment, is prescribed in our McMinnville Municipal Code as to how it comes to you. It's a, it's a decision of the Planning Commission. They review it, they host the public hearing, and review the record and make a recommendation to you. And when you get the recommendation, you have the opportunity to adopt an ordinance affecting the proposed change as submitted by the Planning Commission, or adopt an ordinance affecting the proposed change in amended form, or refuse to adopt the amendment through a vote to deny, providing findings for the denial, or call for a public hearing on the proposal subject to the notice requirements of our code, which would mean that we would need to notice, put a notice in the newspaper five to 15 days prior to a public hearing. So if that's a direction you want to go, that would be a future meeting to do so. We're recommending actually the ordinance in front of you. It's actually an ordinance that amends slightly the Planning Commission recommendation for approval. There were some discoveries after it went to the Planning Commission in terms of refining what was being adopted into the Comprehensive Plan. So the staff recommended amendments is that for Exhibit A, which adopts the PROS Plan as a supplemental document to the comp plan, it's to adopt the PROS Plan, elements of the PROS Plan as a supplemental document to the comp plan. It removes pages of the PROS Plan that are relative to maintenance standards, as well as recreation programming, as the city believes that that is not for, that is not part of the land use program. For Exhibit B, which looks at amendments to volume one of the comp plan, which is the background information, the recommendation is to, originally, it, the, what went to the Planning Commission was that the background information deleted and replaced the information that's in volume one for open spaces. So although the plan is called Park Recreation and Open Space Plan, per, when we were going through the findings to support the, the adoption of this, we, Goal Five is one of the findings, and Goal Five looks at open space for our city, inventory of open space and how we protect it. Goal Five has a whole list of different things that we need to be doing for cultural and natural resources, and open space is one of them. As going through the findings for that, it was recognized that actually what's in this planning document does not actually respond to the Goal Five open space requirements. So we had originally deleted the open space inventory and response to that Goal Five that's in our volume one background information. What we're bringing to you tonight is a recommendation to keep that open space information in there, and we will look at that in future planning processes. So our recommendation is to adopt the ordinance in an amended form. The ordinance that you see in, in amended form of what the Planning Commission recommendation was, the ordinance that you have in front of you and the exhibits for that ordinance reflect those amendments that we're recommending.
Did Director Muir have anything to add to this?
Nothing to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does any counselor have any questions for staff? Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. So the Parks Plan as amended last year reduced the acreage from 14 to 10.3 per 1,000 people. And in order to do that, you are, we are reducing the park acreage for areas brought into the urban growth boundary, meaning new park acreage by 50%. Is that basically what you, you told us?
The, the PROS plan, and Susan might be, might be a better resource for you for this question, but the PROS plan has an appendix that talks about the new parks planned in the UGB expansion areas. The hundred, the reduction you see from 254 acres to 127 acres in the UGB expansion areas reflects what's in that appendix, but it also reflects the overall reduction that we need to meet to meet that level of service.
Got it. And this was driven, I believe you've said, both in this meeting and a previous meeting, in part at least, by an appeal of the city's previous Parks Plan, just feeling there was a sense from some members of the community that there wouldn't be enough resources to fund, fully fund those parks, is that?
I, I think it's better for Susan to answer that question.
Okay.
I'm having a really hard time hearing both Heather and Counselor Peralta, but I think if I understand what your question is, it is, was the reduction in park acreage related to our ability to maintain and keep up the parks? Is that, was that the question?
Yes, to acquire the land and maintain the land, basically.
Yeah. And what, and this really relates to your conversation during the work session. One of the things that the PROS plan allowed us to do outside of the land use process was really look at the maintenance costs and make sure that we were not acquiring more land than we could maintain. And so that's what's reflected in that, keeping the acreage that we currently have and keeping that as a standard going forward. So we're not reducing any acreage as we see it and feel it in the community, but we are reducing it in terms of the aspirational 14 acres per thousand, which the city had never funded achieving that, that acreage.
Thank you. May I continue the questions? Okay, thanks. So in the testimony on Fox Ridge, the park that had previously been identified as a community park is now being considered as a natural resource park, and does that, that means that, that it'll be protected as a natural resource, but it's not included in the city's Parks Plan in terms of the acreage that we're adding? Is that correct?
I'm going to defer that to Susan as well.
Well, actually, what I would say is that there was some conversation at the Planning Commission, and I think Counselor Tekolsky was a part of this conversation where there's going to be a, need to be a partnership between publicly owned pri- um, excuse me, publicly owned parks and open space and privately owned and maintained parks and open space. And that was part of the conversation. As Heather mentioned, the PROS plan is more in alignment with the Fox Ridge Road Framework Plan than it, than that was with the overall framework plan. So we believe it's, it achieves the goals that were outlined in the Fox Ridge Road Area Plan, but it may not be city-owned or maintained property.
And Counselor Peralta, so I just put up on this slide, the, the PROS plan that the appendix C is talking about, contemplates about 88 acres of public park land under greenways and natural areas in the UGB expansion areas. So the, the natural, and in the area plans, we don't describe any of these parks as either public parks or private parks, because that's, that's a decision for the future as these plant, as these master plans come into the city and we work through the process. But there, I think your question is, is there the opportunity that there's, that the mechanism is in place in the PROS plan update for that to be a public park if that's a decision of the city? And based on the acreage that's described in Appendix C of the PROS plan for the UGB expansion areas for natural resource areas, there is that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. One final question, if I could. Do you, Heather, do, um, this may not be something that you have with you, and I, I can appreciate it if it's not, but the area on Booth Bend, do you have a map or some kind of, or Director Muir, some kind of, can we get an idea of what the specific area is on Booth Bend that, that we're not including in the plan?
If you, if you give me a few minutes, I can pull up that work from our, actually, it should be in, it should be in your framework plan document, that's one of the exhibits, Exhibit D. Let me find a page for you. The map's not the best map, so if you need a different map, let me know, but it's page 247 of the overall packet. This is a smaller rural residential subdivision that we brought in as, as part of our land need analysis for the 2020 UGB amendment.
So Director Richards, is, is this the yellow area?
Yes.
Would it be possible for those to be projected, for those that can't see at home?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Let me see if I can find a better map for it. is the area where there's a rural subdivision around Lawson Lane. And it's, so there's a, there's a lot of one acre and two acre lots there. Is your question, how big is that area in overall acreage?
I'm just trying to find where, I'm just trying to see where it is on a map, basically.
It's Booth Bend Road at Morgan Lane.
Yes, thank you. I don't know if my cursor, oh, it does show up. So right here is the three-mile lane junction, the bridge going over the river.
Got it.
This is Highway 18. It's just south of Highway 18, outside of our city. Over here, you see this black line, this is where our UGB picks up land, south of Highway 18.
Got it. Thank, thank you, Director Richards, for bearing with my questions, and I appreciate I have one other question, it's not entirely related, so I will save that for another, for, after the meeting. Thank you.
Any other counselors have questions? Mr. Chenoweth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can we go back to that slide with, was it 170 dash, or dot, whatever it is? So I'm confused, because when I read this, that pretty clearly does not say it's giving the director the ability to pick which land to bring in. It looks to me like it's pretty directly saying they don't have to acquire it, which would then set up a situation where we're authorizing the Park and Rec Director to go under that 10.4 acres. And can I, am I, am I miss, what am I missing?
So I'm gonna throw that to Bill Kobayzmann to complete my answer, but I will start it here. The idea is that the plan, the, the land use system will identify the lands, and this provides something of a relief valve if considerations outside of our land use policies, for example, budget and maintenance standards necessitate that we can't handle taking on a park right there, right at this time. From there, Bill, can you finish that out for me?
Uh, yes, thank you. And, you know, I, I think you're right in your understanding of what this does. It's not pick and choose what lands come in, but it's the director having the ability to say, based on financial, financial factors, you know, there is a section in the PROS plan that talks about maintenance and what we're, we, what the city can and can't, what, you know, what level of maintenance is required. And for the director to say, we essentially are not ready to take this property in, and so I'm not going to take it. And yes, that would have some repercussions in terms of what, meeting the 10.3, but if you recall, we're, we haven't been meeting the current standard as well, and what that would require is when the Parks Plan comes before the city in the future, to look at that and see what has been meeting, and if in fact the city can't fund the maintenance of the parks that it requires, maybe it's a chance to relook at that. But that's, that's essentially what, what this allows.
Yes, Counselor Chenoweth?
If you'll permit, I can share my experience on the dais here in the Planning Commission that is relevant to this and to kind of help me, help me see what they're talking about here, is, you know, I, I, when I was on Planning Commission, we were bringing in neighborhoods and the developer, just going back and forth, and hey, I've got these two lots up here, we can put those towards the city, and, and at the time, you know, an engi- uh, Public Works Director or an engineer filling in for the Public Works Director might chime in and say, well, we can't take those, we, you know, I, I don't, I don't know how long, but we might not acquire those properties because maintenance, we don't have money at the moment to maintain those. And, you know, full stop, we didn't take on what could be a pocket park up there now that we could have, by the time it's developed, which it just recently came to us to actually develop out and where those were, that it's, could be a different game, it could be a more creative approach to some developer willing to put those into open space and, and active areas, as opposed to a park at the time when it comes in for about being shut down. I find that having the authority to not acquire a park resting with the Parks Director, a more comfortable proposition for someone who can manage the long-term understanding of parks. Everyone in, in staff is well-equipped to work on what they're working on. I think the Parks Director being the one to have the authority to say, okay, I see what you're saying, we're on this timeline, can we look at it this way? Can we look at it this way? Okay, if we ultimately can't, then we ultimately can't, but they're going to be protective of the metrics that are in the PROS plan that say this is what the need, we need to meet, and they're going to be able to manage that asset.
Thank you for that explanation, Counselor Gary. I, I guess what concerns me, I always get concerned, one of the nice things about a council government is you have a multitude of, of council, right? You have, you have different ideas and different points of view. And when you set that power in one person's hands, I, I get a little worried about what the implications of that would be. Mr. Kobayzmann, one question, or maybe staff maybe could answer this question. If, if, if our Park and Rec Director down the road, it's after Susan Muir, it's somebody else, and they decide not to bring in, so we take her out of this discussion, they, they decide not to bring in a piece of property, is there an appeals process?
I, I don't believe there would be.
So it's, it's one person's final decision, one way or the other?
Yes.
And point of order, let's, let's stick with directing comments to the mayor, even if we're going through the staff.
Counselor Gary?
So I just, I, I wanted to draw your attention to this, because I wasn't done, if you don't mind. I just wanted to draw attention to the dais of this. I, I think it may be worthy of a discussion point. I know we discussed it once, we've had a change of makeup. Are we really wanting to vest this decision? Because I get what you're saying, but once parkland is taken out as a possibility, it's not available as parkland anymore. And it's, that's a final decision resting in the hands of one person with no appeal. And so I, I just, I have some real grave reservations about that authority being invested in the hands of one person.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, yes, City Manager Gary?
So, Mayor, let me, let me make a suggestion that may help. This is, this is what's in the comp plan, and, and this is what allows us to, to move through the acquisition of parks property as part of a land use process. One of the things that we could do for you that's outside the land use, you could move, you could move this ordinance forward, we could also bring back a broader tool for you, a property acquisition ordinance, that, that sort of fully, that fully set the expectations and standards around how we acquire all kinds of property. And I think we could address the counselor's concern in that context and still be able to move forward this, with this land use piece that we need to get done.
Thank you, Mayor. That, that would help. One of the, of course, concerns I have is I want to make sure it actually does come back, and our poor staff has already overworked. But, uh, but that, that would, I mean, a, a commitment to bring that back was, with, with some, what I'd love to see is some way to prov- I, I, there's, you know, you understand, I'm conflicted here, right? Because providing appeal opportunities is also not a grand idea. But at least a discussion point on how we can put some safety in there would be great.
Well, it's something that we can direct to do and make sure it's brought back.
We can, we can take, we can take your consensus to bring that forward in a work plan for you for future consideration.
Heather, I have a question. So I just want to make sure, so we agree to this, and it memorializes that, that, that property is going to come into the city for parks, and, but it doesn't necessarily say that we're going to do what's in the Parks Plan to spend money to develop those parks. Am I under, can you explain that?
Well, I want to make sure I understand your question. So the, by adopting these elements into the comprehensive plan, we're establishing our minimum standard of park programming to support our population, and also identifying relative areas of where parks should be located. And then when we're going through the land use application process and large developments are coming in, we have the opportunity to have discussions with developers about there's, our, we have an adopted plan that says there's a need for a park in this area to serve, to serve future growth, we'd like you to develop it and dedicate it. That's, that's the minimum standard that we're establishing for that work. We have the opportunity to say, we'd like you, if, if we choose to move forward with the dedication of the land so that the land is available for a future park, we have the opportunity to say, we'd like you to dedicate the land, not develop it at this time, we don't have the opportunity to maintain it. We also have other options available to us, so we recently went through a process with the Baker Creek North subdivision, where we had the developer dedicate the land and then continued and developed the park and enter into an agreement to maintain the park for 15 years until such time we felt we could bring it into our system. So we have a couple of different tools in our toolbox to work with, but we still have an adopted plan that has a minimum standard of park service. an adopted plan that has a minimum standard of park service for our community.
Okay, and then one other question, what's the cost to the city to hold undeveloped land, to maintain undeveloped parks? Is there a cost per acre?
I think Susan, I'll defer that to Susan.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look that up for you, Mayor. We actually do have a cost per acre in one of the appendices. And I also just want to say, one of the great things about this is the close connection that we have to the budget for both ongoing park costs and capital costs, and so you all will be reviewing that and looking at that every year as well. And one of the things we hope to present to you this year is kind of the first year out of the gate with the new PROS Plan and making sure that parks maintenance is funded to the same level as park capital acquisition and development is. And so I think this will all come together in a better way at that point as well. But I will take a minute here and look up that cost amount for a per.
Well, she's looking at, so we have a councillor that needs to leave, so.
Is there a protocol for that?
If you, if you need to leave, you, you can leave.
I didn't, well, I didn't know if there was like, they document, I mean, I mean, like, my kids can't be left alone, so I should go.
We, we would just show when you left the meeting, we still have a quorum after you leave.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that whatever the process is, was that I follow it. Thank you.
We just ask you not flip the chair over on your way out.
I don't, I don't think it's been that difficult of a meeting, maybe next time.
Anybody have any additional questions for Director Richards while Director Muir's looking up that cost? Councillor Cunningham?
I think that, one of the things, and this is just for kind of the good of the order for the general public, that just to clarify, that our work session earlier about the Park and Recs, this is totally separate from the PROS Plan, so that there is no confusion to the public, that if we're voting for this amendment, we're not necessarily voting for the Parks and Rec facility.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I would say is, is the city council has already, as a policy, adopted the PROS Plan update by Resolution June 2024. This is simply a means of adopting it in a manner in which the land use program can support the PROS Plan and moving that forward. So it's bringing more tools to the toolbox for the community in terms of how we get parks, how we have parks dedicated, how they're developed, so that we can utilize the different tools to deliver the program.
Thank you. Director Muir, we found it, it's $500 per acre.
Thank you. It's in the appendices, Appendix C of the PROS Plan.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, would the, like, council like to consider Ordinance Number 5157 per the recommendation of the Planning Commission, or direct staff to notice and plan for a public hearing to Heather, can you put the options back on the board?
Do you want me to put the slide up of the options available to you?
Please.
Yes. And again, to let you know, the ordinance in front of you has the amendments suggested by staff in terms of the components of the plan to adopt. This webinar works a little bit differently. So you can adopt an ordinance affecting the proposed change, change as submitted by the Planning Commission. They did not have the recommendation at the Planning Commission level for accepting some of the pages from the PROS Plan into the comp plan, and it also did not have that open space exception as well that we described tonight. You can adopt an ordinance affecting the proposed change in amended form, that's what you have in front of you tonight, based on the staff recommendations for amendments. You can refuse to adopt the amendment through a vote to deny, providing findings for the denial, or call for a public hearing on the proposal.
I would be comfortable choosing Option B, move to adopt the ordinance in amended form.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councillor Chenoweth, and a second from Councillor Cunningham. Any further discussion?
Can I make a comment, Mayor? I just want to thank staff for the very comprehensive work done to addressing this and the comprehensive plan, and one of the things that I really appreciate in this specifically was calling out the need to focus on some of the parks that may have fallen into disrepair, specifically in Ward 3, the Kingwood Park definitely is in need of some significant repair and, and enhancement, and that obviously is a, a community that is socio-economically underserved, and so I, I really appreciate that we are doing that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Daniel, can you poll the council?
Councillor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councillor Chakolski?
Yeah, I've, I still find it unfortunate that we had special interest groups help us remove parks from the plan, and I don't feel that that's taking care of our people, but that's the amendment that was given to us by the state, so therefore I will follow it, and, aye.
Councillor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor President Peralta?
Aye.
Ordinance Number 5157 passes on its first reading unanimously. I will now ask the city attorney, David Leightonberg, to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 5157, an ordinance adopting the relevant portions of the June 2024 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan otherwise adopted by Resolution 2024-38 as a supplemental document to the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan.
Do I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 5157 as?
Yeah, I saw a motion.
Second.
Councillor Chakolski and Councillor Gary. Any other discussion? Okay, can we have a vote, Daniel?
Councillor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councillor Chakolski?
Still disappointed with the removal of the parks. Aye.
Councillor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
And Councillor President Peralta?
Aye.
Ordinance Number 5157 passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will now adjourn the city council meeting at 8:48 PM.